The one up here, yeah. I mean, the All Kings one for me is...
That one's good.
Yes.
It'd get in an alley. I go out of my way to make it to that one because this one's just...
Crazy.
Yeah.
It's wild. Yeah, it's wild.
All good?
We're good.
These good? Everybody?
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting this morning. Today is Tuesday, March the 19th, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the City Hall Community Wing, and I do appreciate each one of you coming out, especially knowing that it's spring break, but to participate in your government. So with that, I would ask you all to please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence, to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Please be seated. And I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please, and I would ask each City Council member to bring their mics as close to their station as possible.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Our first order of business this morning is a proclamation. The proclamation is the She Leads Florida Appreciation Day.
Many hats.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This proclamation is about a brand-new, soon-to-be-new, or no, a new developing organization which... Well, you'll do the, you'll speak in a minute, so it's my turn now. So, brand-new, hot off the press, so let me begin. Whereas She Leads Florida is a faith community of women comprised of many ethnicities, denominations, and backgrounds, and whereas She Leads Florida provides a safe platform for the exchange of ideas with a community of faith-focused, independent thinkers who support and encourage each other, network together through deep relationships in Christ, and whereas She Leads Florida offers perspectives that can only come from hundreds of leaders representing a broad spectrum of influence and provides a framework to link interdisciplinary perspectives centered in the Bible to offer faith-based solutions for modern-day challenges. And whereas She Leads Florida honors the accomplishments of women in faith around the state in several fields of interest, an array of professions, nonprofits, and Christian ministries, and whereas these honorees have contributed tirelessly to the sustainable well-being of our beloved state, championing faith-based solutions to modern-day challenges, and whereas She Leads Florida is truly inspiring for its mission to empower Christian women to lead and push for positive change in the state and the entire country, and its members are most deserving of recognition for their inspiring work. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that March 23rd, 2024 be officially designated as She Leads Florida Appreciation Day. Can I possibly get you to say a few words?
I want to thank, on behalf of She Leads Florida, I want to thank the mayor and the City of Palm Coast just for acknowledging what we're doing. She Leads Florida is a movement. It's not an organization, and it's comprised of women all across the state of Florida, and our inaugural launch is this Saturday, and we are going to be honoring at least seven women from the City of Palm Coast out of the 52 women statewide that's going to be coming all over, and we have the great Dr. Alveda King and Mrs. Universe, Heidi Shear, and so many others that are part of our organization that's going to be flying here to help us launch it. You can find out more information from going to sheleadsflorida.com, or if you want to learn more about our organization, it's sheleadsamerica.com. And our sponsor is State Representative Kion Michael out of Jacksonville, and she'll be issuing the certificates of distinction honoring women from eight different sectors within the state of Florida. Thank you. And I want to say, because she's over there hiding, that Chris is one of our honorees, so we thank her.
We move next to a presentation of grant opportunities, and who will lead the presentation? Mr. DiLorenzo?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Sorry about that. Jason DiLorenzo, Chief of Staff, and I have, guys, introduce yourself, please, while I find this.
My name is Garen Hopkins. I'm the Environmental, or Utility Compliance Coordinator with the utility.
And I'm Christopher Crawford. I work for, I'm the supervisor of wastewater collections and trying to run these lining projects.
All right. Thank you, guys. There's the presentation. All right. Today, Mayor, City Council, this presentation is looking for consensus for a letter of support to send for a grant opportunity with EPA, and I'll describe, there's two grants in here, one letter of support for the main grant, and one is just to tell you another grant that we're, that we're currently working on. So, like I said, two opportunities. One's a $12 million grant that, with no match required from the City of Palm Coast, and it's in coordination with Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council and the Jacksonville MSA. So normally, we are not associated with the Jacksonville MSA, but because of our association with the Planning Council, we were provided this opportunity to join in this grant, which is, which is really good, because Jacksonville MSA is a little, just a little bit bigger than us. And then we also have another grant opportunity for $140,000 for a solar project at the community center, again, with no match required, and I'll go through each of these now. So the first is the CPRG grant with the EPA. It's two, two main projects, but they're funded together because their goal is pollution reduction. So the, we have $2 million going towards Fire Station 22 and 26. Those are our two new fire stations that we're going to start construction on later this year, and those are for solar projects for those two facilities, plus energy efficiency upgrades to the HVAC system and appliance, energy-efficient appliances for those two facilities as well. And then the big project, and why we have the utility gentleman here today, is $10 million for wastewater clay pipe lining. This reduces our INI, which infiltration and intrusion, which you can see here, we have a little chart in here. On one rain event from October of last year, we had about three inches of rain, and those three inches of rain caused our lift stations to use about twice as much energy for the four days until they recovered. This isn't for every lift station in the city, but we have 150 of them, so it depends on, you know, where the flows are, on which ones are having to work harder and use more energy. We also, just for this single event, spent $98,000 in tank trucking for the, so those three, those three inches of rain caused us to have to pump out lift stations, and that cost us money, right? That cost the rate payers money, and so this pipelining reduces the amount of rainwater that goes into the system and then reduces energy through those systems, plus the chemicals that we have to use to treat that rainwater at the plant itself. Right now, we currently budget $1 million for pipelining of clay pipe. We've completed about 50% of the system of lining, the clay pipe system, and just for your edification, when we do projects now, we do it with plastic pipes, so it has a longer life and less opportunities for INI. So, like I mentioned, this has no, no-match $12 million grant opportunity that we are pursuing with the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council. The second one is the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant. It's a $140,000 grant. It's to add solar panels to the community center. The electric bill at the community center is roughly $4,000 a month. This would have an annual estimated savings of $21,000, so we'd cut the energy costs at the community center, not quite in half, but pretty close. The system itself has a 25-year lifespan, and we estimate that we'd recover about half a million dollars from this $140,000 grant over the lifespan of the, of the system. So, as I mentioned, we are requesting consensus to send a letter of support. It's a requirement of the grant that we send the letter of support, that we, that we are interested in moving forward with the grant, and that we will accept the dollars if we are awarded the grant. And that is our presentation. These gentlemen can answer any technical details you have about the wastewater lining.
So I would ask City Council members questions before we talk about consensus.
Absolutely. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I think this is great that there's no match required for these. I have one question regarding the INI. Potentially, could this also help alleviate, you know, when we have actual main breaks and things like this, could it potentially also help reduce the impact of pipes breaking underneath roads and things like that for catastrophic impact?
Yes, it absolutely would. Our biggest failures are the clay pipes, and the CIP peeling is actually basically inserting a PVC liner into those pipes.
Phenomenal. Okay, awesome. And then for the solar stuff, I am so, I'm so all-in on this. For years now, my strategic action plan items have included a full solar evaluation of all city facilities. I think this is really representative that solar can offset a lot of the costs of our electrical usage from these facilities, and that we're starting to see buy-in from all stakeholders across the board. Again, this year, I'm going to be trying to get our city to commit to one of our strategic action plan items of having a sole fuller, a full solar evaluation. I think this just emphasizes the possibility for us to have a financial horizon that is, you know, a 10-year, 15-year recovery time, and I'm very appreciative of you guys bringing this before us. I have no doubt that hopefully we can reach consensus here. Thank you, guys.
Mayor. Councilwoman Hyder, question or comment?
I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation, and based on the information that you've shared, it looks like a grant that would be quite beneficial to the City of Palm Coast, and we would be looking forward to it as long as it's not going to cost our taxpayers any money. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pontieri?
Thank you, guys, so much. I appreciate the initiative and going out for this. Couple questions regarding the finances. What, so I know it says we currently budget $1 million annually for lining projects. Is that out of our utilities fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Utilities, okay. And then what do we also budget in the CIP, or what do we have budgeted, if anything, to do this in lieu of getting the grant? So in other words, do we already have CIP dollars, capital project dollars, already dedicated to take care of this if we don't get the grant?
Yes, but just that $1 million a year is the current funding. It's been like that for several years, that we funded it at $1 million a year, which, and then we, we do as, we line as far as we can go with that $1 million.
Gotcha. So there's no extra dollars in any larger CIP project?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And then the $98,000, what, what budget is that from? I guess, do we have like a contingency for certain events, things like that, where this is coming from?
Utility, utility operating.
Utility operating. Okay. And then my last question is, obviously, no match is fantastic, but in what timeline will we have to use these monies if it's granted, and what do we anticipate we will have to pay for installation of stole, so have we done that analysis of, I mean, we're obviously going to probably come out of pocket a little bit for certain things. Have we done that analysis yet?
We have two years from when it's granted, and, and Councilman Clufus, thank you for your comments as well. I wanted to touch on this, that we had SolarFit help us with understanding the cost recovery, and they provided the estimate for installation as well.
Okay, so are we at full cost recovery at the 140 mark?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's the total cost for the project.
Got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hold on one second, Vice Mayor.
Carl has something to add, perhaps, that I don't know.
I just wanted to clarify something. The CPRG grant is a five-year grant for the, the pipelining and the solar community center. The ECGB one is a two-year grant. That's the, the two at the fire stations, and grant compliance cost is part of the grant as well, so that that will be a requirement. So all costs should be in that grant. We did get, like Jason said, we did get some estimates and worked with vendors to get some quotes. Obviously, when we bid it out, if it's more than that, you know, then there could be some cost share by the city necessary.
Thanks, Carl. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carl. Vice Mayor?
I have no question. Thank you for the presentation.
So I, just because I didn't get asked, at some point in time, the solar panels are damaged or worn. The expense to maintain that system comes from where? The money's to pay the, the expense, the, the ongoing expense over time?
Yes, if there was some, if there was any damage to the system, I think it would be the city's responsibility to...
Okay, but, but they do not, the solar panels do naturally wear out over extended periods of time, I assume, and have to be replaced. So there is, there is some operating expense, but it pales compared to all that you have shown us, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just for posterity, I think solar panels, most often manufacturers have 25-year warranties for them, and they do eventually need to be replaced, but they'll start just degrading in their performance. So 90% recovery, 85%, but they still continue to work after that 25 years, but generally, there's a 25-year manufacturer.
Much like a tile roof?
Exactly.
Perfect.
Sorry, just one more question on the timeline. When does this have to be in, and then when should we know whether or not it's been awarded?
Yep, it's due at the end of this month, so March 31st is our due date.
Okay, and then do we know when a decision date will be made?
I do not.
Okay. Just trying to figure it out for budget purposes.
We do know it's a fairly quick turnaround. They're trying to really implement it as quick as possible, so.
Great, thank you.
So Vice Mayor, starting with you, if you just give me a yea or nay on the consensus?
Oh, yeah.
It's not a vote.
Totally.
Yes.
Heck, yeah.
So City Council unanimously has unanimous consensus that you will move forward with the application, is it?
Yes.
And as it's warranted, please come back to us, especially, we'd like to know when the ribbon cutting or the party date is, right, Councilwoman Pontieri? There you go. All right, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we move to the next agenda item, which is public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications and Marketing Director seated in the back. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. And with that, I would open up the public comment for any items that do not appear later in the agenda. Yes, sir.
Morning.
Jeffrey Seib.
Morning.
I am speaking today to give my overwhelming support to this initiative by the city to receive grant funding from the EPA for projects that would benefit us all by reducing air pollution and our costs to build and operate new fire stations and repairs to our wastewater facilities. This project is a win-win for everybody involved. As a city, in all our endeavors, we are producing and emitting into the air around us more pollutants than ever before. As a contributor to climate change, the burning of fossil fuels and vehicles and the operation of our necessary functions as a city like wastewater, air conditioning, and refrigeration also contribute to the air, this air pollution. Solar power is here with us and constantly increasing in numbers of users in Palm Coast. Energy-efficient buildings like the one we are in right now and the community center help to lessen the amount of carbon-producing energy required to operate these facilities. In places that have high amounts of air pollution caused by the burning of fossil fuels, there is a higher incidence of childhood asthma, emphysema, and other breathing-related issues. It's a benefit to us all to reduce energy costs in the wastewater pipeline, quite literally. Reducing the amount of water leaking into the system would then reduce the energy for treatment required per unit of material, and therefore, the emissions produced. It's always easier to equip the facility during initial construction than to retrofit afterward. This grant money would allow the city to solar power the two new fire stations that are planned. In addition to those of us that need a little help in becoming and continuing as responsible homeowners here, this project will also benefit. So, on balance, the cost to us, to the city, is minimal. While the benefit is great, it's not political. I commend the city staff responsible for the initial steps in this process to get grant money for doing things in the city that are necessary for us to go forward. I hope the council sees this as it is, a benefit, and gives their vote of approval.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please, if there is one. Yes, ma'am. Are there any other, yes, sir.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I go out on the internet a lot and research traffic calming methods for different neighborhoods and things, and I noticed that there's a lot of cities in Florida that use them, and there's a lot of counties in Florida that use them, and Florida Park Drive with almost 8,000 cars per day, or vehicles per day, is a little too much, and I would like to see something done with it. But more than that, I, I would like the city to consider having a meeting of neighborhoods where people are saying there's a lot of speeding going on in their neighborhoods, and others talking about excessive traffic in their neighborhoods. Have a meeting and actually discuss the, the problems of why traffic calming devices do not fit Palm Coast, because we've been asking for them, but we're not seeing any movement toward that area. I know it's being studied, so I do appreciate that. But it just seems like it's been a long time. People, I can show you newspaper articles back to 2013 where speeding on Florida Park Drive was bad, still bad. So, wow, that's been 10 years, and nothing has been done. I'm sure there's other neighborhoods that are probably experiencing some of the same things. So if the city could put together a meeting where they would talk to neighborhoods about the speeding, about traffic fumes, dust, and noise, and how it affects their health, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Steve. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Mark Stansel, Seven Old Woods.
Pull it forward, so you don't have to stoop over. There you go.
Seven Old Woods, Mark Stansel. Just want to thank and commend the, the City Council for acting on the, getting a maximum height on building houses and to prevent the flooding. That was a terrific move. And also, I was just wondering, is there any plans to help those that have suffered because of that in the past? Just curious about that. And I also would like to comment also on the, the grants. That sounds like a really great plan for the city. Thank you.
I thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilman. I was going to cycle.
Richard, introduce yourself for me.
Is that okay?
No, introduce yourself for me.
I'm sorry. My name is Richard Hamilton. I live in Island Estates over in the A-1A. I have eclectic interests, but one of my major ones is on the A-1A cycling safety projects and working with the, on safety. I was going to cycle over here today, but a strong north wind put me off that idea. I noticed on your agenda coming up, but I don't think there are public comments, you have four volunteers on the B-PAC committee, and I wanted to just come, not to, I know any of them, but to stress just how important that B-PAC is. It's a very bureaucratic thing.
Richard, did you want to save that for the agenda item?
Will there be a discussion? I just, I didn't want to say anything about the...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I didn't want to say anything about the candidates. I don't know them. I just wanted to comment that it's very important that you have somebody strong on that committee. The whole TPO organization can be very bureaucratic, but having somebody on the B-PAC committee and the Citizens Advisory Committee who is, will put your interests, is very important. It's one of the spokes that make the TPO wheel go around, and I'm hoping that maybe you'll let them express their views of what's, what's missing and what their interests are, and I'll meet them afterwards.
Thank you.
And I'm also very glad about your support for the, those grants, and wanted to just comment the, the appreciation to the staff who've gone out and worked with other organizations like the regional council to get those, so that it's no cost to the city to, as you said, Commissioner Clufus, it's like a no-brainer, but I just wanted to express that.
Just define the acronym B-PAC for the public for us.
Um, the, there's a lot of...
Just what it stands for.
It stands for Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. It's one of the...
And how long have you been on it?
I have not been on the B-PAC. I, I attend meetings. I go to it. I do not want to be part of it, because I find it better to do other things.
I thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Joe Giordano. I'm a 33-year resident of Palm Coast, and it pleases me to see your interest in continuing to add renewables and energy-efficient programs to our city. I want to thank Mr. DiLorenzo and his team for their effort in researching and being able to answer your questions effectively, but I want to continue to support the grants and the pursuit of those grants and anything that has to do with energy efficiency for our city. It benefits us all. Thank you.
I thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public want to address me at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Dale Carr, 44 South Lake Drive. I just have a question about another grant. Is it my understanding that there is a grant available for... Is it my understanding that there is a grant available to establish EV recharging stations in Palm Coast?
You make your comments, and we'll have staff follow up with you.
Oh, okay.
So the question is, are there grants available for?
EV charging stations.
EVs, charging stations, okay.
If there are, I think it would be very wise for Palm Coast to take advantage of them, not only for the environment, but also for economics. People traveling down 95 or up 95 and have EVs, when they stop to recharge their vehicles, often have a meal at a restaurant. And if we don't have them, EV stations, they're going to go to Omen Beach or St. Augustine. So again, I think it's a very good thing to pursue.
Good. I thank you for your comment, and if you'll, make sure you give your information to the gal in the back. Any other members of the public? Would you like to address me at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Jeremy Davis, P-section. I just want to say thank you for getting the swell department out there to actually maintain the swells. That was kind of nice to see. Yeah. And it was also brought to my attention that I need to control my emotions a little bit better. So, I want to apologize if y'all think I'm attacking y'all. I'm not really attacking y'all, I'm just really hurt by what y'all allowed to happen. Other than that, I just want to say thank you. That's it.
I appreciate your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And as the presiding officer of the meeting, I'm going to take advantage of offering my city council member comments at this time. 32 months ago, when you elected me mayor, the previous mayor and city manager had resigned. We were leaderless, the city council was in turmoil, and one council member threatening another. Our city was limping and needed new leadership. In November of 2022, 16 months ago, Mrs. Pontieri and Ms. Hyder were elected, in which is when I feel we began to rebuild. Since then, this board has worked very hard in tackling the issues we inherited. Do not mistake this council's debate as dysfunction. We exchange ideas, we disagree, but the board always comes to decisions it feels is in the best interest of the city. Today, the city is faced with challenges, or what I call opportunities. The glass is always full. Today, the city must address the facts. We must address the pressures of impending growth to ensure our quality of life, our roads, our swales, and our utilities are maintained. We must invest in the future and our local economy. We must balance these pressures with our community's beliefs to keep taxes low and avoid government waste. Balancing these competing interests can be tricky. It requires focused leadership by this council and the expertise of city staff. Now that council is unified on the city's direction, I want to take an additional action to lead this city into the future. I would like to make a change in our city manager position. And with that, I'm going to pass the gavel, counselor if you would, to the vice mayor. I make a motion. One, terminate the city manager without cause. Two, use the Florida League of Cities and other sources to employ an interim manager with proven experience. And afterwards, commence the process to find a highly qualified person to manage this city consistent with our community's goals, visions, and values. And that ends my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second. We have a motion on the table. I believe I have to put this out to public comment like any other motion?
Yes.
Okay, so. I'll do public comment first before we come back to the diocese. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this?
Alan Lowe. I was here 36 months ago when you became elected, and 16 months ago, as you said, I don't know if the dates are correct, but when you became permanent in your position. I believe it was a difficult decision because you had said no on several occasions, and I feel that you may have been, in my opinion, somewhat pressured into it by you, Mr. Mayor. I've seen things like our debacle with the Waste, Waste Pro and the new company. I've seen ups and downs on our property taxes, fees increase, jobs increase, paychecks increase, and so forth. Everything that was positive and negative with the city manager's position and her decisions, I think rests with you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, I think that we should have listened to her when she said no, because now she's in a position where she's going to have to find something else to fill that gap. I don't think she should have been pressured if she was, only you know. But I don't think it was right, I think it was wrong, to continue to ask her to be city manager after she had repeatedly refused the position. And so with that, I'd just like to say that I, I hope you have a bright future. I hope we picked the right person this time, and I hope we don't do this again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to comment? Any, okay.
Mike Norris, Tulima Place.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Mike Norris, Tulima Place. I would advise that if you're going to terminate Ms. Bevan and, and get an interim in, that that hire not be done until after this election, because three of you are not going to be on this council anymore. Have a good day.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to comment?
Candy Stevens, P-section. I wasn't going to talk today, but I would like to ask, since we've had all this stuff going on, I didn't plan on the last six months of my life, depending on city council, changing my schedule, changing my life to be here, but the city means that much to me, and I don't feel like some of the decisions that you've made, sir, have been in that same respect. I feel like the building and overdevelopment has got all the city people like me upset, which in turn is falling on Mrs. Bevins. And I do agree, she's in over her head. We have a mess, and we are starting right now, everybody listening and working together to fix it, which is exactly what I've been hoping for. So, with that said, I think it's a good idea for a new city manager, but I want the public to have some say in who you guys hire. I would like us to be able to hear them speaking on how they want to go forward, their ideas, because they need to mesh with all of ours. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing no one, I will bring this back to the diocese. I'll start with Mr. Clufus, and we'll go right down the row if anyone has any further conversation.
Sure, absolutely. I think it was interesting that there were prepared comments from commenters who just spoke. And just FYI, the Waste Pro contract, these, these contracts were done the same way that all of our other contracts were. So I'm not sure the exact feasibility of using something like that against our city manager. But I think a leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way, and I think that's what Denise has done. Leaders have a capacity to translate vision into reality, and I think that's what we have been able to accomplish. I don't support relieving Denise of her duties, I'm sorry, Ms. Bevan, and I'm, I'm fond of the way that she's been able to lead the city. I think our staff, from everything that I have been able to gather, we do a great job here. We have tremendous staff, and leadership starts at the top. And, you know, I don't think following a path of where we may go is the way we need to, we need to, you know, move forward. We need to move forward and leave a blazing trail of success. And I think without having workshops to properly prepare our city council on why we would want to move in a direct, different direction, and for what reason, this is a little bit premature. But those are my comments, that, you know, leadership has the capacity to translate vision into reality, and I feel like today's Palm Coast is brighter than it was previously.
Ms. Hyder?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to ship, may I make two comments? I want to comment to Mr. Steve Carr.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Steve Carr, I just want to thank you for your comments that you made. And I must say that I've been here on city council just a little bit over a year, and you've been here just about every single week that I've been here, since council has been going on. And I have repeatedly heard the same requests coming from you, the same words about Florida Park Drive, and the fact that it should be addressed. So, and, and I've made this very clear, that that's one of the problems in this city, that is that we're not listening and we're not addressing the needs of our city and citizens in a timely manner. When you tell me that it's taken 10 years, and you've been coming here for 10 years and asking for the same thing, that's a long time. And, and I feel that at some point, these matters need to be handled more efficiently in a more timely manner. In regards to Denise Bevan, Denise, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you. I, I think that we have engaged and developed a wonderful relationship, not only with you as city manager, but I feel personally, we developed a relationship that I'm hoping that we can continue at some point. However, I do feel that this city needs strong management, and someone who is going to manage the job and be a leader, and lead us into this new, growing city that we are becoming, and do a job, at the end of the day, we can say job well done and not have to go through this again. So, I want to thank you, Denise, and I just want to thank all the citizens here. I thank you all for your comments. Your comments were very relevant, and as we move forward, let's look towards being a stronger, more united city, and let's all work together. Thank you.
Ms. Pontieri?
Thank you. I, I tend to agree with the sentiment that we are at a time right now, and we know for sure two members of our council, Councilmember Clufus and Councilmember Danko are not going to be here. So I find it to be inappropriate to remove our city manager at this time, knowing that you all will not be working with whoever we choose in the future. We were under the obligation to pick a new attorney because our current firm could no longer service our needs. That's different. This is, this would be by choice. Mayor, and I mean no disrespect, I don't know if you'll be there in November. So, you all are basically going to be voting on behalf of an entire city that you may not be representing in, in, you know, eight months. I think my other issue with this is that city manager and city staff serve at the pleasure of us. They serve at the pleasure of city council, they serve at the pleasure of our direction. And to Ms. Hyder's comments about there have been a lot of citizen complaints, a lot of citizens have come up to this podium, taken their three minutes, sat down, and felt very unsatisfied, that's our fault. That's not city staff's fault, that's not the city manager's fault. That is, that absolutely falls on the shoulders of us to elevate those comments, figure out if they're important, and I don't mean important in the, in the face that everybody's comments are important, but how much of our citizenry actually feels that way? What is the data behind how many people are being affected by the, the same people that come and speak? When, when we have Mr. Carr that comes and speaks about Florida Park Drive, he's not speaking on behalf of himself, he's speaking on behalf of a lot of residents on Florida Park Drive. It was the same thing with Mr. Crier, it's the same thing with Celia Puglisi, it's the same thing with some of these folks who come about the flooded info lots. They're speaking on behalf of a lot of people, but for some reason, because they're an individual, their comments have been minimized. And that has happened for far too long. And I think that we are wrongfully resting that on Denise's shoulders, and I find that to be incredibly obtuse and unfair. I agree that there needs to be a change in direction at a management level, but I think it more happens at the level of our directors, some of our directors. And I can tell you, we should all know that that's occurring right now beneath the leadership of Denise. She is taking steps currently, and we should all know it, because she's very transparent about what she's doing, at least with me, which I appreciate. She's making steps for succession planning and for changes at the director level that I think are absolutely necessary and that will move our city forward. Furthermore, she came in at a time when we have experienced unprecedented growth, and we can say until we're blue in the face that it's her fault that certain things have not been managed correctly, but the fact of the matter is, when we, as a council, approve zoning variances that approve density above and beyond what we should without the proper infrastructure in place, that's not her fault, that's the council's fault. So, I think my, my biggest issue with this vote at this time is, one, only two of us are absolutely for sure going to be working for the next city manager, whoever that person is, whether it's Denise or somebody else. And two, I find it to be a little unfair to make this change right now, when, you're right, Mayor, we do, I feel like we finally have a council that is able to engage in some pretty heavy debate, have some pretty heavy disagreements, but still come out on decisions, for the most part, that I think are moving the city in the right direction. And so I think we need to give that a little bit of time, let it resonate with new staff that, that we are bringing in. We just hired a brand-new economic development director, which I think is fantastic and needed. And let these things take time to come to fruition before we make a change, specifically when we have an election right around the corner.
With that, with that, Vice Mayor, I would ask you to call the vote.
Wait, I have additional comments, too.
One moment, one moment. Is there any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So in regards to Florida Park Drive, it's just very disingenuous of you, Mr. Carr, to come up here and say that nothing has been done in the past 10 years, and it's having repercussions today. Just in January, we approved a $94,000 study to look at the speed on, on Florida Park. In 2016, we had an air study to, because of, stemmed from the same things that you have come forward, the lane widening, we've also banned trucks, right? These are all improvements to Florida Park Drive. You want to really stop traffic on Florida Park Drive, you have to make it a cul-de-sac in the middle of Florida Park Drive. It's an unfortunate thoroughfare on Palm Coast, but we have made strides to try to ease these things. And just because one person comes forward every week and says, hey, nothing's going on, nothing's going on, we have taken action. But it's important for our council and our council in the future to also reemphasize that there are changes being made in conjunction with these requests from the public, and some of them, I mean, I heard the groans for the $94,000 study for speed. I concur, but it's reactionary, because we have people in the individual, the audience that want to come forward and make these statements. It doesn't mean that we're not doing anything. And I just think it's, it's disingenuous to make it seem like nothing has been done in the last 10 years, which is, you know, really quite far from the truth. And also, I just want to make sure, I will not be on our city council again in six months, I'm term limited, you can only have two terms in city council, and it's been an honor to be able to serve with you guys. I'm with Councilwoman Pontieri that the majority of us may or may not actually be, you know, here coming in November. So, I think that it's very important that the council who is in place has to choose who they want to be able to serve with, right? I think worst-case scenario is we relieve Denise of her duties today, we hire someone to interim, November comes around, they get fired, and then another search has to go out, next thing we know, we're 18 months from now, still without a city manager, without leadership. And my biggest qualm is that this is going to leave so much turmoil for all of the directors sitting in the back of our audience right now, and all the employees underneath them. So, I just wanted to confer with my, you know, peers here and let you know how I felt about some of these things, because oftentimes, we don't rebuke what the public says, because it's easier not to. And we can always do more, that's without a doubt, we can always do more, but it doesn't always create the, kind of creates a vacuum for these comments to be heard, but I just needed to say those things, so thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Nick. And I will just also concur with you that I do think an interim city manager and letting the new council decide... the new council decide was probably the best way to go. With that, there's no further.
I, I just want to briefly respond. Councilman Clufus, I did not mean to disparage any prior work that any council has done. I want to be very clear about that. I do think, obviously, you know, we have done things, and you're right. It's, it's very hard to kind of sit here and hear comments, knowing, well, we are doing this and we are doing that, and we are, our hands are tied by finances, and there's choices that we have to make, and so it is very difficult sometimes to convey that to our citizenry, and so I understand that frustration. My point was simply that I think that there are probably things that have fallen on staff shoulders unfairly that were spurred by decisions of council. We're not perfect. We make, we don't make the right decision every time. So, that was my point. I didn't mean to disparage any work that you all have done.
I'm sorry, but I didn't mean to point that at you, thank you.
No, 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 it's okay.
Yes, Ms. Hyder?
Yes, I just want to make it very clear that I did not speak to make Denise feel like I was placing the blame on her for all the things that have gone wrong. Not at all. I think Denise has done a well job, but I do feel that we're moving into a different era in this city. We are rapidly growing city, and we do need strong management, and we do need someone that's going to address issues. And that's not Denise's problem. You're right, Teresa, it is our problem, and it's the staff's problem. So, we all need to be in this together and work to make this work out for all of us.
If I could make a final comment, if I may? I just want to clarify one issue. We work under a charter. Charter is very clear. Staff does not work at the pleasure of city council. Staff works at the pleasure of the city manager. The city council has no authority over the staff. City manager is exclusively responsible for staff, but more importantly, and I'll just finish with this to summarize my motion, which doesn't change, but change sometimes is inevitable and necessary to provide new perspectives and successfully navigate new challenges. While I compliment staff on their hard work and effort, I believe the time is now for change in leadership to move our city forward while protecting our residents' quality of life. And that concludes my comments.
Can I just say one? I, I would feel remiss if I didn't say this. Denise, I want to thank you, no matter what the vote is today, for every time I request anything from Denise, whether it's information, a chart, historical data, whatever it is, she promptly gets it to me. For whatever the thoughts are on her being in overhead or her inability to do the job of city manager, your integrity is unmatched.
Yes.
And that is not something that can be taught. Integrity is something that is natural, and you have it. And I absolutely believe that Denise genuinely wants what's best for the city of Palm Coast. We can go to the Fortaleza Cities, we can go out to bid for everybody, anybody who's got the best resume under the sun. But integrity doesn't make a resume. And so, I just, I feel that that's necessary to say, and I think that it's something that is probably being overlooked right now, because, yes, integrity doesn't do the job, but it's a really big part of what we need in this city, because I think we all love the city of Palm Coast. We want what's best for the city of Palm Coast, and I have never once doubted your intentions.
All right. With that, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Nay.
Councilmember Pontieri?
No.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
The motion passes three to two.
That I pass the gavel back to Mayor Alvin.
Ms. Bevan, if I could ask you to meet with HR at this time, with Regina.
Thank you for everything, Denise.
We now move to Agenda Item F, which are minutes, minutes of the city council business meeting held on March the 5th. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Similarly, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the workshop meeting held on March the 12th, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
A motion from the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to Section G on the agenda, which are a special appointment this morning. And Virginia, you'll lead the process.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. The next two agenda items are to appoint to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and there is a regular member and an alternate member, and then we also have an alternate member to appoint to the Citizens Advisory Committee. All four applicants are in attendance this morning. If all four applicants could step outside, we'll bring each of you in. The first applicant to present for three minutes to let the city council know a little bit about themselves as to why they would like to be on this committee, that would be Mr. Kawaja. He could come to the podium, and then we'll bring each of the applicants in one by one. Come to the podium, Mr. Kawaja.
What's going on out there?
You have to leave the room.
The Vice Mayor, though, too?
The Vice Mayor has excused himself from the meeting.
So, he came to remove the city manager and is now leaving the meeting?
Good morning. I thank this, giving, providing this opportunity for the community to come forward and participate in the volunteer board. And I am living in Palm Coast for about 10 years with my family, and I like this, I love the city, and I see that the city is growing fast. I would like to come forward and offer myself to fulfill my civic responsibilities and also to participate in whatever meetings and also contribute to the activities. And I am also a board member of Islamic Center of Palm Coast here. That is the first Islamic Center established about a couple of years ago. And I am also a logistics coordinator in a company, in a food distribution company in Orlando, where my job is to save costs for the, for the company and for the customers. And before that, I had been a residential manager in a group home, where my role was to ensure the safety and well-being of the residents, who were mainly the individuals with mental and physical disabilities. And if I'm given a chance, I would try to learn and also offer what I have already gained, and would like to contribute to the city council and the community. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
If council has any questions, Mr. Kawaja?
Yes, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
No, thank you for applying.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And for clarification, there's no mandate that we have to have distribution of these applicants or appointed positions across the different districts? I know for some of our other appointee seats, we have to have a distribution for the different districts. This is not the case?
No, not for either of these committees.
Okay. Thank you.
Not for TPO-related committees and things.
Fair.
We, we feel fortunate to find volunteers that are willing to participate there.
Understood.
Really do a great service.
All four of these candidates are for both committees as well, so this is Mr. Lowry.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, so we have four applicants for three positions?
Correct.
Right. Please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. James Lowry, 111 Fleetwood Drive. I come to you today, I didn't bring any prepared statements, because I think when you prepare statements, you don't, you lose the passion. I'm originally from St. Petersburg, Florida, served 22 years in the US Army, and I retired in New Hampshire for a few years following work. Recently, about a year and a half ago, I moved back here to Florida and chose Palm Coast as the destination. Best decision I made, honestly. While I was up in New Hampshire, I did make a lot of headway in working with the, what they call up there, selectmen, but city council in and around the government process, I feel like it's a duty of every citizen to come and at least attend these meetings every now and again. I know people got busy schedules, and I really would be remiss if I didn't start to come and get more involved, because that's kind of what we're here for, right? To make Palm Coast a better place. As, as Ms. Virginia Smith said, that, you know, I'm here for the, the bicycle and pedestrian as well as the citizens advisory committees. I have three young children, all under the age of five, with my beautiful wife, and I'm very passionate, and this is where we're going to spend the rest of our days in how we can improve, not only for the safety of my own family, but also for the other citizens in and around Palm Coast. So, that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm putting my foot forward to, to help work with other citizens in this great city and proper county to, to just improve Palm Coast and get it to where it needs to be. And as it's growing, as I heard you guys say in this last meeting, I, I do agree. I mean, you go up to St. John, up at St. John's, and it was once small, and now it's, it's, it's busy, and I see Palm Coast is, is moving in that same direction. So, I think now is the time to be tip of the spear and leverage some of my, you know, leadership that I had as a senior enlisted personnel in the United States Army for so many years, that I can help work with people across the aisle and, and figure out what we got to do just to make Palm Coast a better place.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
First, I want to thank you for your service. Thank you for that. And then I also see, and this applies to a few of the applicants, and I just want to kind of keep this on my colleagues' radar, many of these people have applied for both this position and the next position we're voting on. Do you have a preference, or do you think you're better suited? Because I see you did the same thing as well. Do you feel you're better suited for one over the other?
I think I could perform in both. Well, I know I could, but I personally, if I had a preference, I would prefer to be the primary as opposed to an alternate, because I'm, I'm pretty passionate about what I'm doing here.
Do you have the time for that as well? Do you have the time, like, to dedicate towards that as well?
Of course. Yeah, I work from home. I, I lead a cybersecurity team out of Orlando, but I work remotely, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you so much for your service and sacrifice to our country, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your service, and obviously, you have no trouble working in an intense environment with three children under five. That's a crazy thing. I think that you have tremendous skill in leadership, and I, and I think that yours, your skill set probably, and I am just amongst my peers having discussion here, probably leans more towards the BPAC role. But I appreciate your presentation, and thank you very much for being here today and your application, and thanks for choosing Palm Coast, and I respect everything you said. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up will be Mr. Marciano.
Virginia, all of the candidates reside within the city limits of the city of Palm Coast, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Hello, and good morning. My name is Zach Marciano. I've been, I've been having a background within the business development within the CPG industry for about 18 years. It's been about two years since I moved and became a resident, moved and became a resident of Palm Coast. My wife and I did countless research in this city specifically, and we were happy to buy our first home here. We're thrilled to be part of this growing city within Palm Coast. I'm here today in efforts to participate in development, or further development into this city in nearly any way possible. I've had, I've had been involved in leading the, in, I have been involved in leading a community program through adult sporting events. This is for the county and the surrounding area. The BPAC and CAC interest me, as I have been involved in numerous case studies over the years and have had a strong track record in creating a better pedestrian safety and planning. Cycling specifically has been a passion and a pastime of mine, and have already been sharing ideas to the deputy of Parks and Recs for special events around cycling. With the development of the Southern Rec Center, I believe it's a launching pad for what the city can be and what it could bring. I have many ideas that would, I believe, help the city improvement, and, and I'm always open for discussion. I'm grateful for this opportunity and believe I am a great fit for the future city development. Thank you.
Councilwoman, question?
No questions. Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have one more?
Yep, one final candidate is Ms. Schweinsburg.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Schweinsburg.
Now, do you ask me questions, or do I just start talking?
So, if, one thing, if, if you would pull the microphone closer to your mouth, so you don't have to bend.
Okay, is this better?
Because we have people on, so they can't, so they can hear you a little bit closer.
Is this better?
Beautiful, very good.
Okay.
You're welcome to describe your interest in the position or yourself.
Okay, we can go from there. My name is Laura Schweinsburg. I have been a resident of Palm Coast for about two years. I have never really applied for anything like this before. I've never taken an interest in community government, so I'm retired now, children gone, whatever, so just my husband to deal with, so I have some spare time. I came from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and when my husband and I decided to look around to move to Florida, we looked all over Florida. We were everywhere from Jacksonville to Fort Myers, over to Destin. We looked along the Cypress Coast, we were everywhere, and we liked Palm Coast. So, we actually bought our house here before we retired. So, we had our toes dipped into the real estate, so to speak. So, we have committed, we sold our house in Pennsylvania, moved on here, and I, I'm interested in learning about my new community and put some effort into how it's going. As far as the committees, I read the mailings that come across my email and try to follow and see what's going on. It looked interesting, a way to figure out and learn about my community and my government. I'm a biker, but I am not a dedicated on-the-road-with-the-spandex-padded-seat biker. I like to ride my bike to the grocery store and up to the drugstores, and also just go out and around, get some exercise, but I like to stay on the sidewalks and, without getting killed on the roads. As far as leadership capacity, I was president of our Beaver Junior Women's Club for two years. I was president of our PTA. I was my son's tiger den mom, also the pack leader for the entire Boy Scout. So, while I've not actually had paid leadership, I've had a lot of experience in dealing with a lot of different personalities and moving things along when discussions get stalled, and also making decisions for the greater good, whether it's what I want or don't want. I like to have concession and agreement with discussions, and I like to bring other opinions in. I want to hear from everybody so that we can evaluate which direction to go. That's really what I have to offer.
Very nice. Thank you. Councilman Clufus, a question or comment?
No, I, I just would note that she's the only one who actually noted that she does actively ride her bicycle, too, so I mean, just thinking about the different positions. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good point. Councilwoman Hyder, question, comment?
No comment at this time. Thank you so much.
And Councilwoman Pontieri?
I have nothing, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And that's it. Now, our city clerk, Kaylee Cook, will provide you with the voting tallies.
Virginia, I just, I didn't, I failed to ask before. You've had a chance to describe the, the position and its commitment to each of the candidates, is that correct?
Correct.
And they obviously acknowledged that they could, they understood, and they had the time available.
Correct.
Instructions for this?
Kaylee handed out the first voting sheet for the bicycle permanent seat. The regular member.
Mayor and city council, we received three votes for Mr. Lowry to appoint to the regular seat, and will continue to the alternate seat. And that's the alternate seat for the BPAC. Mayor and city council, we received three votes for Ms. Schweinsburg for the alternate seat.
And now Ms. Cook will hand out the voting for the alternate position for the CAC, Citizens Advisory Committee.
Mayor and city council, we received three votes for Mr. Kowaja for the Citizens Advisory Committee alternate seat.
Very good. All right, so that concludes the process?
Yes, you need to make a motion and a vote for, three for Mr. Lowry, et cetera.
Oh, I would ask for a motion to approve the votes that we have just taken.
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Pontieri, I'd ask for a second?
Second.
There's a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Any other discussion?
Yes, Zach, thank you very much for your application date. There are, there are future committees that are going to be available between our BAC and also an advisory committee for some of the flooding things. Thank you very much for participating, and there are...
I'm already part of the PTO.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I, just final discussion, I would certainly like to thank each of the applicants for their interest and their going through the process, and hopefully they'll find their service rewarding, and I know that we will appreciate it as a city. So, with that, I guess I'd ask you to, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to Agenda Letter H, which is ordinances of the first read, and councillor, if you would go G4, I guess. No, I'm sorry, H6.
Okay, this is ordinance Unified Land Development Code. An ordinance of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending section 3.01.06, uses not permitted in the city, Chapter 3, zoning uses and dimensional standards of the city of Palm Coast Land Development Code, to prohibit outdoor advertising, amending Chapter 12 signs and advertising of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, to ensure compliance with constitutional and other legal requirements, and to provide a purpose, intent, and scope, amending section 14.02, glossary of Chapter 14 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, to add, delete, and restate various definitions, amending criteria related to the amended definitions, providing that existing non-conforming signs may be continued, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance, also a public hearing item, and I believe staff has a pretty detailed PowerPoint for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor, and ladies, please proceed.
Hi, good morning, Mayor, council members. This is Estelle Lenz, planner with the city, and this is an amendment to, a presentation on the amendment...
Bring that as close as you can, thank you.
Is that, is that better? Okay.
Very good.
Okay, Estelle Lenz, planner with the city, this is an amendment to the sign code. We were here last week for the workshop, so this will be an abbreviated presentation. The sign code is regulated by Chapter 12 of the Land Development Codes titled Signs and Advertising. And a brief history is that the sign code was adopted in 2008 with the city's Land Development Code. Certain sections were amended in 2009 and 2012. The code is being amended now to comply with changes in the law, and address challenges, and make the code more business and community friendly. The summary of the changes include, the, the main change is a temporary signage, so it's revising section 12.06, temporary signs, to generalize and simplify the categories by providing a table, revising definitions by deleting and revising the content-based definitions, and generally, the signs that are currently permitted will remain permitted, and the signs that are currently prohibited will remain prohibited. Summary of the meetings that have been held to date is there were two stakeholder meetings held last summer, in August and September. The amendment was brought to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board for a workshop on October 18th of last year. The amendment was brought to city council for a workshop on November 14th. The amendment was then presented to the Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee, the BEAC, on January 25th. The amendment was brought back to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board for a business meeting on February 21st, and we were here last week for a city council workshop last Tuesday. And to, just to summarize the workshop, the one issue that really had been remaining was whether to allow signs or not in the right-of-way, in the public right-of-way, and the Flagler County Association of Realtors President came forward and advised the city council that FCAR was indeed in support of the proposed amendment as presented, which prohibits signs in the right-of-way, and there was also discussion of staff creating an educational tool to educate on the actual location of the rights-of-way, and we have begun working on that. We met yesterday, and we've begun that process. And the recommendation is that the Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee, BEAC, recommends that city council approve the proposed ordinance, amending the sign code as presented, which prohibits any sign located within the right-of-way, as regulated in Land Development Code, Chapter 12. Also, the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board, PLDRB, recommends that city council approve the proposed ordinance, amending the sign code as presented, which prohibits any sign located within the right-of-way, as regulated in the Land Development Code, Chapter 12. And the next step for the ordinance is it would come back to city council for a second reading on April 2nd.
Councilwoman, questions?
The only question was, last time we discussed this during the workshop, we talked about adding a few definitions. Were those added to the ordinance? The, yes, you, oh gosh, I'm trying to think now. It was regarding the definition for temporary signage? Yes. And I think the definition said, yes, I'm sorry, I don't have that right in front of me right now, but the definition said that anything that's not a permanent sign, but when we went back, I was discussing that back in the office, and there's actually a definition for permanent signage, which I think makes it more clear, so I don't know that we really needed to revise either of those definitions, but obviously we can between now and second read, and let me find those.
Councilwoman, I think, we also talked about a map, I just, if you want to add that to your question.
Well, I don't, I don't, yes, I mean, I remember us talking about reference guides, but not...
Definitions involved with the, the, the distance and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think the definitions actually have to be a part of the ordinance, though, whereas the reference material isn't going to be part of the, you know, it's just kind of reference, so. I didn't follow that. But as far as the definitions for permanent or in temporary signage, the definition for perm, sign permanent, it's on page 49 of the ordinance, that, the draft ordinance. So, sign permanent is any sign which is intended to be and is so constructed as to be of lasting and enduring condition, remaining unchanged in character, conditioned beyond normal wear and tear, and positioned in, in a permanent manner, affixed to the ground wall or building. So that's a definition of a permanent sign, and then the definition of temporary says a sign intended for, for use not permanent in nature. So basically, it's not permanently affixed to a wall or the ground. So, we thought...
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Katie, is that...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Catherine Reichman on the line.
Yes.
Good morning, and I just wanted to mention...
Catherine, just...
...stayed under the definition of temporary sign, that it's of a material that's somewhat flimsy in nature, that's included sometimes in temporary sign definitions. If, if that's what the council so desires, we can tweak that.
Catherine, please introduce yourself to the public and city council.
Yes, sir, Catherine Reichman, Assistant City Attorney. I was involved in writing the sign code.
Thank you. Councilwoman, is that kind of answer?
Yeah, Katie, I appreciate that, because the way I look at this now, and this was kind of my holdup before, is, you know, people will find loopholes. So right now, as it stands, it says sign permanent, anything that's affixed to a wall, well, that could be a banner that somebody technically affixes to a wall. So if you could get with staff, I don't want to hold up this process, but if we could, if, if we pass the ordinance or make a motion to approve it, knowing that the definition will include this reference to flimsy material, or whatever language, Katie, that you've seen elsewhere, that has been pretty consistent, to make it clear that we're not talking about a banner, that you can just be nailed to the wall, now it's a permanent sign.
And to your point, permanently affixed to the ground, I, I'm not quite sure I know what that means either.
Well, I think concrete fence poles, I mean, that's, that's my...
So not a, a four-by-four, deeply planted in the ground?
No, it's a base... Right, I mean, because I know when we put... Base-mounted.
What's that?
It is base-mounted.
Base-mounted, okay, good, thank you.
So that, so you, you said that, Barbara, but again, like, that's not in here, right? So if we could add things like that, just to make it very clear what the dichotomy is, that would be great.
Because, might as well close it up, I, I agree. Was that answered?
That's it, yeah, thank you.
So, we did talk about perhaps providing a resource that would identify rights-of-way, so there was no confusion or misunderstanding. Is that in process? I don't know how long that takes.
That is in process right now, with the educational tool. We are working with CAD, we're also working, we've got brochures from FDOT. It's in the works, we should try to have...
And we'll, we'll promote that to all of those that, that we can, that this resource is available for them to use as a guide.
Yes, we will.
Perfect, thank you. Councilwoman Hyder?
No comments at this time.
Councilman Clufus?
No, I would concur with Councilwoman Pontieri, that people will find a way, so being as descriptive as we can, certainly going to help in the long run.
Understood.
Thank you.
Very good. If there's no other discussion or question from city council, I will open this item up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. Any final discussion? I would ask for a motion.
I think a motion to approve with, with the understanding that the two definitions of permanent and temporary will be changed for the second read.
So I have a motion from Councilwoman Pontieri, is there a second?
Seconded.
A second from Councilwoman Hyder, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Ladies, thank you very much. We now move to Agenda Letter I, which are resolutions, and number seven, councillor, if you could be so kind, just to read that in for us.
Okay, so resolution fiscal year 2022, '23, annual comprehensive financial report, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, accepting the annual comprehensive financial report as presented by the external audit firm, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, councillor. The floor is yours.
I apologize. Good morning, ma'am. Excuse me.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Shannon Boone, Chief Accountant of the Finance Department. I am here today to introduce...
Shannon, just bring it a little closer.
A little closer, better.
Don't lean, bring it to you.
Okay. Shannon Boone, Finance Department. I'm here today to introduce Webb Shepherd. He is an audit partner with James Moore &amp; Company, and he is here to, to present our annual financial results for fiscal year 2023.
Hi, everybody. Webb Shepherd, a partner with James Moore &amp; Company, and we're here to report on the annual audit for 2023. Do I have to turn it on? There you go. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say a big thank you to Shannon, Helena, and everyone else in the Finance Department. We asked for a lot of information, and we, we really appreciate all the help and support that they provide. It's a, it's a long process, very involved, and so we, we always appreciate their help. We also appreciate you all for hiring us and for continuing to allow us to serve you in this capacity. We always appreciate the opportunity. Before we dive into the year and audit, wanted to go over a few of the, you know, really the three primary different types of audits that a CPA firm can provide. So the first one there is the financial audit. That's the one that we have done for you all. That one's required annually by the state. There are prescribed guidelines and standards surrounding this audit, and it, it's a risk-based approach, and we have a whole other slide on that, so we'll dive into that on the next slide here. The next one would be a performance or an operational audit. Some municipalities and counties and governmental entities, they have an internal audit department. That would effectively be what that would entail. The internal audit department could perform some of these performance or operational audit-type duties. It could also be performed by an external, you know, accounting firm. Generally, a detailed analysis of a specific subject matter, whether financial or operational related, and usually the focus is on efficiency or effectiveness of processes or functions, and also compliance. The next one would be a forensics audit. Generally speaking, that happens in, in when there's sort of a triggering event, usually that's when fraud or other wrongdoing is suspected. Generally speaking, and I say generally because there's a lot of flexibility there, a lot more flexibility than there would be in some of the other types of audits. It can be, it can be customized to whatever the client would prefer. Generally, it's testing of 100% of subject matter in those areas of concern. So the one that we perform for you all is the financial audit here. It's a combination of high-level and detailed testing. There is considerable testing completed at both the transaction level and at a higher level. We perform analytical procedures to assess overall changes and trends, again, at a high level and at a detailed level. Risk assessment is performed to identify areas of higher risk that require additional audit procedures, so we dive deeper into the riskier areas. We perform control walkthroughs over all significant transaction classes, and those controls are evaluated for both the design of the internal controls and the implementation of those internal controls. So that's what a walkthrough is. We will take specific transactions and take them from inception all the way to the end, and where they're posted into the general ledger, and make sure that all of those key controls have in fact been implemented and performed. There's also detailed control testing over cash disbursements, payroll, utility billing, and we perform extensive sampling over those areas. and we perform extensive sampling over those areas. Statistical sampling, we take the entire population and statistically sample from the entire population, and so it's a random sample generated. And so that's how that works for the detailed testing. We also test journal entry processes and approvals. Journal entries are always a required, sort of a higher-risk area. Anytime anything manual is happening, we want to look at it and make sure the proper approvals are in place and that your processes have been followed. So we do that every year. Then we look at, it's called a single audit. That's performed over your major grant expenditures and the compliance thereon. We'll talk more about that because we did have a single audit this year as well. We also use audit software to test for anomalies. So the software's come a long way in the past few years, and we try to stay on the cutting edge, not the bleeding edge, but the cutting edge of software and technology. So we fully utilize that in our audit processes. So that helps a lot, too. And now we'll look at our independent auditors' reports. So the first one here is the report on the financial statements. It's an unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion that we can offer, and really, the report there that you want to see. That report, in summary, it states that we take a top-down approach to auditing management's financial statements. It states that we're independent. We work for you, not for management. Our responsibility is to form and express an opinion that your financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next one there is the internal control report, which is required by governmental auditing standards. States that we consider internal control, but do not provide an opinion on its operating effectiveness. There were no material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance found as a result of our audit procedures. Again, that's the report that you want to see there. It's really the best one that we can provide. The next one is the single audit report, which I mentioned before. That one's required anytime you have more than $750,000 in federal awards or state assistance. You had, in 2023, you had $3 million average on in federal and about $9 million in state awards. Again, no material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance as a result of our audit procedures, and that's really the best report and the one you really want to see there.
No news is good news.
We look really hard. We try to find, so-
And correct me if I'm wrong, if I may stop you, but I think just that's a testament to our department, because isn't that a pretty high mark and hard thing to achieve?
Absolutely. That is the highest mark that the Finance Department can achieve as far as our reports go as independent auditors.
With the history of that performance and award-winning over many years.
That's how an auditor gives a compliment. They say, "We can't find anything wrong."
We try. We look really hard. I promise, we do. Yes, negative assurance. There you go. So the next one here is, we call it the AG letter. That's the letter to the Auditor General. They require us to look at certain things, primarily your financial condition assessment and other key metrics. There were no exceptions found as a result of our audit procedures. The next one's the examination report. It states that you're in compliance with specific investment policy statutes. No exceptions found there as a result of our audit procedures. And then you all have a separate CRA audit issued as well. That's a State Road 100, Community Redevelopment Area. There were no issues or additional comments in regards to that, so that one was all clean, same as the citywide audit. A little about your financial health. So all of your funds are in compliance or exceed your internal fund balance policies. So that's in Note 17 to your financial statements, but that's a healthy position and really what you want to see, you know, from a policy-setting standpoint, that they're in compliance with those. Your overall financial condition assessment, again, that's one required by the Auditor General. It's inconclusive, which really means average. You're kind of right in the middle there. You're not unfavorable. You're not favorable. So it's a healthy position. This is a little about your general fund, the different categories here of fund balances. The increase in unassigned is primarily due to expenditures finishing the year under budget, combined with about $2 million in investment earnings. The non-spendable there, it's your prepaid expenses. It's just an asset account. Restricted is restricted for public safety, and you all have some committed fund balance set aside for your disaster reserve there. This is your general fund, fund balance policy here. So your internal fund balance policy states that you want the general fund, unassigned fund balance, to be between 10% and 20% of next year's budgeted expenditures. So where you fell at September 30th, 2023, was you were at 37%, which is about four months. The GFOA is the Governmental Finance Officers Association. They recommend a minimum of 60 days or about 17%. They also recommend, if you're a coastal community, that you consider increasing that due to, you know, FEMA can take longer to reimburse you and things like that. So just wanted to point that out. These are all of your other governmental funds, except for the general fund here. The restricted is your impact fees, restricted fund balances. You all have a committed fund balance for capital projects there, so money set aside for capital projects. And then the unassigned-assigned is the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. It's all there. These are your business-type funds. It's the unrestricted net position in all of your business-type or proprietary funds. It should be noted that in the business-type funds, they don't allow you to have a committed fund balance. So to that point, like, where you previously saw committed for capital projects, you're not allowed to have that in business-type funds. So you'll see that if you all are, you know, building up for projects, which is what you're doing in some of these funds, you'll see an increase in unrestricted, just for the record there, what it's worth. So in utility, you know, your expenses increased less than rate and customer increases, and you had some investment revenue in that fund as well. Really, in all funds, it was a solid year for investments, especially at September 30th. And it can fluctuate, you know, based on that. Stormwater, again, you all are planning for your future projects and system improvements, which is what some of that increases there. The non-major went down, and that's an intentional decrease in your building permits fund per Florida statute. So they came out with a statute that said you have to, you know, you can't hold on to so much of this. So the city did what it was supposed to do and decreased that. Your internal service funds is your self-insurance fund, your IT fund, and your fleet management fund there. And that's internal service funds. They serve the other funds of the city. And this slides on your fund balance policies. You have the same fund balance policy for all the other funds as well. The Cliff Notes version, you're in compliance with all of those in all of your fund balance. So that's a healthy position and really what you want to see there. A few highlights for the year. 2.6 million deficit in the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. That one's continuing to decrease every year as you pay off that original project. You had 8.9 million of additional drawdowns on those SRF loans for those projects that are going on right now. You did implement a new accounting standard. It's called subscription-based IT arrangements, and so that standard required you to capitalize as an asset and a liability, those, for lack of a better term, leases for those software subscriptions. You also had advances to other funds in Note 8, as you probably know, your utility fund, loan to Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund, originally 4.9 million, so there's $4 million left, and it's paying it down every year. So your SRF loans increased by a net $6.9 million, and that's the utility in stormwater. Your overall long-term debt decreased $4.1 million, so you're paying down long-term debt, even with those significant drawdowns. A little bit about your retirement plans, and that's in Note 11 to the financial statements. The volunteer firefighters carries with it a net pension asset of $700,000. FRS has a net pension liability of $1.7 million. Those can both be affected, same by, you know, investments, so that can cause some swings there in the net pension asset and liability. All of your other employees are in a defined contribution plan, which carries a zero net pension liability with it. These are a few additional services we offer. Shameless plug here, please keep this in mind if you ever need help with anything. And are there any questions?
Councilman, you want to start us off with questions?
First, thank you very much for the presentation. And again, it's a testament to the quality and caliber of our Finance Department and everyone who's part of the system, because it's across all employees that were, you know, journaling transactions and things like this. So it really is a top-down team effort. It's, you know, it starts at the top and it works its way down. I would also like to thank for the fact that we were able to talk about a forensic audit and what exactly that would entail. I received education during our meeting that we were able to kind of answer my questions on what we would expect if we were to bring a firm in here to try to explain to us what a financial, or, I'm sorry, a forensic audit would look like. So I got those questions out of the way, and I'm very thankful for the information that you were able to relay to me, and thank you again to staff. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I really don't have any questions at this time. I have been through the presentation with you. I think a job well done. Looking forward to working with you again, and thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
So, Webb, I would just comment for the public, those especially listening online, that each City Council member was afforded an interview with you and city staff to ask for the presentation and to ask any and all questions that they might have. So we've already been through this presentation in great detail, and I would second you were, and staff were very good about answering the questions. So it's not that we don't have the questions now, but we've already been through them. Councilwoman? Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing.
Sure.
Just so I don't forget. In addition to the audit for the public, we also have information which is currently available, and my understanding is that this audit will become a public record as of this afternoon, available to anyone who chooses to locate it on the website, not too hard. But there is a trifold brochure, which is really done very nicely by staff, which identifies all of the budgeted revenue sources. We hear the question frequently, where does the money go? So starting with this trifold, you could compose your questions, and they are located right near the doorway, and start to see exactly where those dollars go, and I can assume that those dollars will somehow tie to your audit. Additionally, there is the 2023 Annual Report, which looks at the finances of the city in another formal way. Again, available to every resident, every member of the public that would like to begin to ask questions about how the financial mechanism of the city works. Councilwoman?
Thank you. Again, thank you for your time, your presentation. Thank you for your time yesterday and all the information you provided. Since Councilman Clufus did touch on it, I would like to kind of utilize your knowledge while you're here and for the public, because it has been a hot topic for the forensic audit. If we were to do a forensic audit on, say, everything, because we haven't found smoke in, from everything that you've put before us, right, there's no smoke anywhere. So if we were to do a very high-level, broad, if this even exists, forensic audit, what are we looking at cost-wise? And I don't need an exact cost, but, you know, give me some bookends here. If we don't have a specific thing that we are trying to pinpoint, what can we expect that range looks like? In your opinion?
Most CPA firms will price something up based on the time they spend on it. So if you don't identify a scope, it could be unlimited, really, I mean, infinite. It could be, they could spend an infinite amount of time going back to the city's inception if you didn't identi-, I mean, that's the potential other bookend.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's an extreme, but that's potentially what you're saying, if you don't identify a scope. So it could be, you know, as little as an hour or as much as-
Come on, Counselor, drag it out of him.
Yeah, so I know-
I know that's hard to say, but there's really no-
No, it's okay. I won't cross-examine you.
It's-
No.
I mean, it could run into the millions if you really wanted to look back to the city's inception, and, you know, it really could, if you looked at every single transaction of the city for every single year back to the city's inception, that would potentially be the high end of it.
Sure.
And probably, there would, it wouldn't be infinite, because there would be, you know, once you looked at every single transaction of the city from its inception, I mean, I guess I don't know how to really quantify that, because I don't know how many there are.
Well, let me ask you this, so I'll narrow it for you a little bit, then, based on your experience. You all have done forensic audits, correct?
Yes.
So in doing those, in your experience, have there been defined scopes based on red flags?
Correct. In our firm, so our firm, we're celebrating our 60-year anniversary. We're very happy with that. We're a firm of about 300 people. We audit, you know, about 60 municipalities. In total, it's 100, 101, I got the number yesterday, the updated number based on our peer review sampling, 101 governmental entities. That includes special districts and water management districts and things like that. And so in our firm's history, I'm not aware of anyone engaging us to do a forensics audit, unless there was a cause for concern or like a triggering event. Something happened, and they said, "Okay, we want to look deeper into that area because there's, you know, smoke, for lack of a better term. Let's go see if there's fire," kind of thing.
Gotcha. Okay. And then my question is, so it looks like on the slide regarding, and it looks like page 191 of our packet, this business-type funds, pages 48 through 47, it says unrestricted net position in proprietary funds, that slide. I just wanted to get kind of a feel. It says utility is at $35 million, but what portion of that, based on what you all have looked at, I don't need an exact number, but a roundabout number, what portion of that is actually liquid?
Oh, boy. It's on the balance sheet, actually. Do you have any idea, Shannon Woods?
No.
I want to say around 20, but I'd have to look to be-
Okay.
To be honest.
Can you, maybe, without quantifying, what is this number made up of?
So let me just pull it up so I can look. I know I brought this for a reason.
While he's doing that, I would just urge counsel, I know we're talking about a forensic audit, but the services that they offer is also a performance operational audit. That might be a good option to see if we're operating efficiently, rather than looking at, because we haven't, I've gone through two of these now, and we haven't seen smoke from a forensic audit standpoint, but to make sure that we're performing the most efficient way possible and getting the most, using technology, leveraging those types of things, that might be a good option to consider as well.
Always raise the bar despite the, well, we've performed, and there are track record of 80-plus organizations, municipalities, and the fact that, you know, they haven't really had to go forward on this with anyone.
Yeah, I mean, I think this sums it up pretty well. A focus on efficiency, value, and compliance of processes, that seems like something that could be worthwhile for us to consider.
It's the anti-hero for government waste.
Exactly.
So actually, in the utility fund, you're about $35 million in, I would say, well, you also have some restricted cash in there, so I mean, but the liquid, you know, unrestricted cash and investments is about $35 million, so.
Okay, so that includes investments as well?
Mm-hmm.
Got it. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hyder, any comment or discussion on this?
No comments.
One thing, I would say, Webb, thank you for everything that you've done. This is going to be our last face-to-face. Hopefully, if it's not, that might be a problem in the future, but I appreciate everything you've done for the city, and it's always been a pleasure to work with you, and thank you to our staff, who has been very, you know, apt to help in any way possible. And thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Shepherd, so you have one more year remaining on our current agreement. Just highlight for the public, when did you start and when did you finish? Just describe that timeline, so they have a feeling for what this process takes.
So you all go out, you mean this five-year term, so?
No, no, I mean this audit.
So we've been doing- So we've been doing, it must be our, I think they were all five-year terms.
Yeah.
This must be our 14th one.
Okay.
Next year, we have 15th. We've had three.
But what month did you start this audit in and what month are you finishing?
Oh, oh, so we start in, in August, really. And, and we spend about 15% of the audit just doing our internal control testing. And then we dive deep into the year and stuff and all the substantive work and all the other work in December. And, and we work really up through the next three months.
Very good. And last question for me, just so we put it out there for everyone to understand, this year's approximate cost, the city will be charged how much for the audit?
I, I think it's around 60.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that's the number.
Very good. Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. If there are no other comments or questions from city council members, I would open this item up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to question or yes, sir?
Good morning. Hi, my name is Ed Fuller, Honorable Mayor Alvin, Honorable City Councilwomen, Honorable City Councilmen. We've had numerous people come up here and say they have a feeling that we need a forensic audit. I just want to ask the auditor, is there a, an accepted accounting practice where, where you look under feelings for something to do in audit?
Thank you, Ed, okay.
The other thing is, because we haven't had one, doesn't mean we need one. And, and I think Councilwoman Pontieri nailed it. What's the scope? There's no smoking, you either have one or you don't. It's an either-or, it's accounting. Sir, is that correct? I'm sorry. Mayor, is that, you know?
Yep, you got it.
It's an either-or proposition. You've, unfortunately, when, when, when people come up here and they don't have substantiated facts, it's very disruptive. It takes time from you, it takes time from the staff, it takes time from everybody. And I want to applaud our, our financial services department, they do an excellent job. And Ms. Bevan, her integrity, unbelievable. I believe you've just, you've just nailed it there as far as integrity goes. And you can't measure that on a, on a dollar and cents thing, but you know whether you have it or not, and you know whether you've lost it or not. So when this issue comes up again, please, city council, unless you've got some substantiation, a specific area to go to, this man just said it, it's going to be innumerable how much the cost is going to be, please, please give that due attention. Thank you so much for listening and thank you, financial services, and thank you, auditor, you guys do an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the audience want to make a comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close up. The one question, Webb, that I didn't ask again was at the conclusion of next year's current contract, then the city would again go out RFP for all takers who might apply to perform that service, just so it's clear to everybody. Very good. So if there aren't any other questions or comments, is staff looking for an approval?
Approval.
Okay. So then I would ask for a motion at this time to approve the, give me a title, please.
Annual audit.
Go ahead.
Annual financial audit for fiscal year 2023.
That. The annual financial audit for fiscal year 2023. So that is what I'm asking for a motion of approval for.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Hyder to approve as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you and congratulations, especially to staff.
Yes, thank you, staff. And I know Elena's on vacation right now, but really appreciate all the work that went into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to agenda item I-8, which is approving a statewide mutual aid agreement. Chief.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Give me one second here to get situated. There we go. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Kyle Burial Fire Chief for the Palm Coast Fire Department. And we're here today to take a look at the statewide mutual aid agreement. We're going to ask for a resolution to approve joining this agreement. We'll talk to you a little bit about what that is and how we've participated in the past. Pretty clearly, we're aware that Florida is vulnerable to a wide range of disasters and emergencies, and those disasters and emergencies can disrupt essential service and can overcome or damage and destroy some of our needed infrastructure. Often, these events can exceed the capacity of local government, and so the Emergency Management Act of the Florida State statute provides for local governments to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the state for reciprocal emergency aid. Definitely, our partnership with Flagler County Emergency Management is key here, and Jonathan Lord alerted us that this would be a place where we would really want to join with the state. The background on this particular agreement is it does not obligate the city in any way. It does create a path for providing or receiving assistance, and it provides for reimbursement opportunities. An example, so many times, Fire Department has participated in a, where we've served the other locale, local governments throughout the state of Florida. But we're only a part of this plan and encompasses many other things. You heard Chief of Staff DiLorenzo talk about the cost for a small rain event for tank trucking. That's a routine ask that we have through this agreement and generators, it has been another thing where we've been on the receiving end of this agreement. But our deployments, so PCFD has deployed three times in the last several years. Obviously, for Hurricane Ian, we were blessed here in the city to not have the significant events that many places across the state did. And in Fort Myers Beach, we were the 24/7/911 for 28 days. Palm Coast deployed, really a record deployment for us, we'd never done that extent. We also had a paramedic assist with medical facility relocations, which was as complicated as it sounds like it is. During the Chapala Complex fire that was related to Hurricane Michael, Hurricane Michael knocked a lot of stuff down. In 2022, it became on fire, and we responded in that time. And then during Hurricane Michael, for about 14 days, we were 911 for the rural panhandle. In those situations, this provides an opportunity for us to be reimbursed. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about Ian. It was about 230K in reimbursement that came back to us to cover. Doesn't always cover 100% of the cost, but this is an opportunity, hopefully, we don't have to use this resource, but this is an opportunity for us to be deployed, to recover some funds. It's, it's, it can be, the state sets the reimbursement rate at the time of, and then FEMA or the percentage, and then we utilize FEMA formulas and with, through the FDEM process to do that recovery. So what we're recommending is for city council to adopt this resolution and continue to participate in the statewide mutual aid agreement.
Councilwoman Pontieri, you want to lead us off?
Just thank you for bringing this to us. Obviously, I think this is a wonderful idea. I appreciate everything that your department does that may not directly benefit the city of Palm Coast, but does benefit our state and our fellow residents, our neighboring residents, I should say. And also, you all have had some challenging fires over the last week, so just my prayers have been with you all, and I want to thank your department for the work that you've done over the past, I think, maybe week or two. And there's been some pretty hard challenges. So God bless you guys, and I'm in full support.
Councilwoman Hyder?
Chief Berryhill, thank you so much for the presentation. And also, I too respect everything that our fire department does here for the city of Palm Coast and all the assistance that's given around the state, and we appreciate everything that you do. And I also heard a bunch of fire trucks out this week also, so I know it's a tough job sometimes, and my prayers continue to be with all of you.
Thank you so much. I just want to make sure that I'm praising the right departments as well. I couldn't be a bigger fan of the men and women that work for the Palm Coast Fire Department. I think they're the best, the best that there is. But also, as many of you saw when we had the tornado, we're not the only people out. So this is emergency management, which is part of my role under, under our city. And so this isn't just PCFD that we're agreeing to be a part of both receiving or giving assistance. This is public works, this is utility, this is stormwater. This is all the, I mean, everyone pitches in, as you've seen when we do stand up our local Palm Coast EOC. So I appreciate all those kind words and never want to go without saying thank you, and I think the men and women deserve them. But I also want to make sure that we recognize the, the other folks in the city that just do a tremendous job of helping to keep us safe and reacting to some of the things that occur when you have a place as beautiful as this, as close to the ocean.
Yeah, all the folks at the EOC, I mean, truly, they just do a phenomenal job in the county as well.
How can I, how can I follow that? That was tremendously said. I would say you guys, you know, you go towards danger, that you don't only serve Palm Coast, but it's evident that you serve the entirety of anyone who needs assistance, and that's commendable, and I can't say congratulations or thank you enough, but thank you.
Chief, when, when does it, was this actually began? Or when, when does this start?
So the, this is, this agreement is replacing some older things. And so my understanding is that once we've, it's, I believe it started March 1st, I'd have to double-check for sure, but once we agree to join, we're joined. We're not excluded from some of the benefits associated with this by not joining. So in some ways, there is a, and we're not obligated in any way by joining. So this is a no-cost scenario for us to be a part of this agreement, but it does create some, some more formal pathways for us. And we're not exposed today that we're not in the agreement, I believe that county ratified two weeks ago or three weeks ago. But it would, I believe it would start pretty, I think March 1st was the date.
Okay, so just rolls, rolls right forward. Very good, thank you. All right, if there are no other comments or questions from city council, I would open up this item to the public. If there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment and come back to the dais. I don't think there's any additional discussion. All in favor, please signify by, oh, I'm sorry. I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Councilwoman Pontieri has offered a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Hyder has seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Chief, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to agenda letter I, number nine, and Counselor, if you would.
And this is a resolution waterfront, waterfront park phase two, part A, find submission. Resolution of the city council, the city of Palm Coast, Florida approving a Florida inland navigation district waterways assistant program grant application for waterfront park part A. Construction phase two, authorizing the city manager or designated execute said grant application, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Counselor, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Eric Chivo, architect for the city, and I am pleased to present our request for waterway assistance program funding for phase two A of the waterfront park project. City of Palm Coast has truly benefited from a.
I'll actually just bring it just a little bit closer, thank you.
My apologies. The city of Palm Coast has truly benefited from a great relationship with FIND. This slide demonstrate, identifies some of the successful projects that have resulted from this relationship, including the FIND-sponsored intercoastal water cleanup event, Long Creek navigation enhancements, the intracoastal children's, trail children's memorial park, and waterfront park itself. Waterfront park truly is a crossroads of recreation within the city, being the only park in the city located along the intercoastal waterway. This park is an important asset to the city due to the location along the intercoastal and its adjacency and connection to other beautiful, FIND-funded city parks and amenities such as Herschel King Park, Long Creek Nature Preserve, and Bing's Landing. This slide demonstrates the history that FIND has played in the development of the city's waterways, going back to 2012 with more than 1.2 million dollars in awards to Phase one of the FIND-funded waterfront park project included the dredging of the canal, concrete pad installation to support amenities associated with a kayak launch, shoreline stabilization, floating dock installation, and general site work. Phase one was completed in August of last year. Excuse me, one second here. There you go, I apologize. Funding for phase two of the project, which will include, which will provide expanded parking and amenity accessibility to support the work completed in phase one, was awarded in October of 2023. This expansion will provide for ease of access to the intercoastal waterway and the newly constructed kayak launch. The focus of this grant is for phase two A of the project, which will provide for the construction of an event pavilion on the previously constructed concrete slab that will allow for greater flexibility for the use of the park. The adjacency of the proposed pavilion to the new parking drop-off will allow for a variety of uses, from citizens-initiated gatherings to larger city functions and events. This will further increase the attendance of the park and expand the potential uses. This phase will also include additional educational and informational kiosks, replacement of deteriorated site furnishings, installation of new furnishings, and upgraded site lighting to enhance the security and safety of the park. Staff will be requesting $300,000 in FIND grant funds, with a city match of $300,000 coming from Parks Impact D-Funds. Bear with me here a second, it's pulling up. The construction of the proposed pavilion would provide for 3,600 square feet of covered gathering space with an adjacent 2,400 square feet of open space to be used for a variety of functions. The structure is strategically located adjacent to the future parking, parking lot drop-off for ease of access. The goal of this and all of the previous projects was to make waterfront park a true destination along the intercoastal and not just a brief stopping point along the trail system. This amenity will allow visitors to the park to spend the day enjoying the beautiful connection to the beautiful waterway. The location and orientation of the pavilion also allows for fantastic views of the intercoastal in an unobstructed connection to the covered and uncovered areas. The construction documents for phase two have been completed, and if approved, phase two A will be incorporated into the schedule for phase two and the project, with the project going through permitting and procurement by the end of 2025 and construction commencing in early 2026. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a reference for me, FIND grants are typically 100% match?
Fifty, 50%, 50/50.
The number you had there was 50% or 100%?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Questions, Councilwoman Pontieri?
Yeah, I have quite a few, and let me just preface my questions with, I greatly appreciate FIND. I think they've done beautiful projects and helped us with a lot in this city, and Commissioner Stapelford has been a blessing.
Absolutely.
That said, we just did a Parks Master Plan survey, gathered a lot of data, and I didn't see a single data point that would indicate we need to spend money on this right now. So I'm struggling a little bit with the matches that could otherwise go to things that our residents have indicated they actually want, like more bathroom facilities along trails and things like that. So if you could, my, my questions are geared towards that a little bit. First, is this a grant that we need to take advantage of now? So in other words, if we were to use some of those funds to go towards things that we heard from the residents, they want, more so than maybe an outdoor pavilion, does that completely remove the possibility that we can go after this type of grant in the near future?
I don't believe it, it doesn't remove the possibility of going after future grants, but this grant does have a deadline for submission.
Okay, but this type of grant, and I see Carl walking up, so he might have some more information as well, but this type of grant can still be applied for in the future. Am I, am I incorrect on that?
Right, this is an annual grant. It's, it's a countywide grant, and there's specific dollars that are collected within the county that certain percentages have to be allocated to various county entities. So depending on the year, we sometimes compete with other government entities applying for grants. Like last year, I think the sheriff went after a boat. I think Flagler Beach has some seawall repair. Marineland has, you know, the marina, they've gone after many times. So depending on the year, there, there, you know, there could be other projects that we're competing against for the small. against for the small pot of money. The reasoning we had chose to go after it this year is we have an existing grant to add parking, and our thought process was that we could add this construction onto that bid, which would ideally provide a better cost savings by constructing it all at once. So that was really the timing, and there weren't any other big applications in there trying to get the dollars. I think we may be the only one. There may be a small little one from Flagler Beach, but they weren't sure if they were going to get their items in on time. But, so, the money was available. We thought now the timing would be right to just combine it with the other construction.
Okay, and I appreciate that. So it says the city match is $688,528.
The city match is $300,000 with this particular grant.
Okay, so why does it say city match equals $688,000 then?
I don't --
It's on your slide.
That could have been the existing grant for the parking lot, I believe. Our current existing grant possibly.
Yes, it is.
So for this portion only, where you're saying the Waterfront Park phasing plan, this portion only is $300,000?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
This is the current phase, $300,000 grant, $300,000 contribution.
And does this come from the general fund?
No, this would be Park Impact Fee Fund.
Okay.
And we did include some alternates in the bid, so our goal was to not go over that 600 grand, because our goal is, you know, we're only going to, you know, we're going to use up our 50% match, and we're going to stop the alternates when we run out of money.
So the $300,000 would come from Park impact fees?
Correct.
Let me ask you this, and this is kind of, I think it's still related, but it might be going beyond here. Because impact fees can only be used for capacity-related costs, are we able to use those monies to increase things like bathrooms or certain facilities on our existing? Because this is, we're enhancing a current park with this money, right?
Yep.
So can we use that money to enhance components on other, at other places, other parks around the city?
Right, you couldn't renovate an existing building, but if you wanted to build a new restroom, or if you wanted to double the size of it, 50% of it could be capacity, you know, it has to be new capacity elements at a park.
And do we know what the appetite for, I mean, how many outdoor, and this might be a question for James, which I don't see him, but, oh, there he is. Do we know how many outdoor pavilions we currently have and whether there is an actual need for this?
Across all facilities, Councilwoman?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, not at waterfront, sorry.
James has, Park's Director. Trying to think just quickly how many we got. So we got, at Waterfront Park, we have three pavilions with a covered patio. Holland Park, we have numerous amount of pavilions out there. And then also Seminole Woods, Linear Park, Ralph Carter have some pavilions as well, so.
And those are all able to be rented, right?
Correct, yes.
Are we running into issues where we don't have the ability to accommodate needs because we don't have enough outdoor pavilions?
Holland, yeah, Holland Park is one of our mostly-used pavilions, and they, and then, once we, the splash pad does open up as well. When the splash pad was open, it was pretty overrun out there, so trying to get people to more of our other parks was kind of what we were hoping for as well. I know we've been getting some requests from residents about just shade at waterfront in that new pavilion area. We do have it for rent right now as an amenity to rent, and we're thinking weddings or something like that would be a great venue, so that this pavilion would help with that as well.
So, but this pavilion though, I mean, when we hear from residents, and I think this was a concern of Councilman Clufus, like cooling stations and providing more shade at parks and things like that, but we're talking about a pavilion that would be rented out and not necessarily used for that purpose? Or, I mean, what are the, I guess, what's the thought behind this specific pavilion?
Mostly our pavilions, you can use them for, you can rent them out, but you can also use them just to hang out, be at the park, enjoy the park. So that's kind of the same layout we would use for that pavilion as well, is, you know, most of them are first-come, first-served basis, but they have the ability to rent, or you can just go hang out, have a picnic, have good time.
What's the utilization rate right now for our other pavilions at Waterfront Park?
They've used, renting, you know, we have about one a month, but we do see some people use that for lunch multiple times throughout the day. And then with the new kayak launch, I've seen a lot of people kind of use that for fishing. I know a lot of people have been using it, some people have been using it for the cornhole. And then with the extra kayak rental that we got out there, you know, I haven't got the check for this month, but, you know, with the nice weather, I'm sure we're getting some people renting out those kayaks and everything.
Okay, thank you for that. I put you on the spot.
No, it's okay.
Want to have Webb audit those numbers for him real quick? No, kidding.
So I appreciate the presentation. I guess, you know, I'm really up in the air on this one, because again, I don't know that this is the best use of monies based on the survey and the data that we just collected. I hate to pass up FIND money, and I don't want to take FIND for granted.
No pun intended.
Exactly. But I don't, I'm just up in the air, so I don't know. Maybe, I welcome your thoughts on this as well.
I appreciate, well, I asked a question. I appreciate the comment very much. I think I'm going to have to rely on the economy of scale, cost-saving with regard to the parking and the completion of the phasing. So are we getting a little bit more bang for the buck there? But agreed, maybe perhaps it could be spent another place, but I'm not familiar with a prioritization that I could choose from, so. I question it. I think it's an ongoing question for the future. So again, magnifying the value of the dollars used because of the construction economies of scale, kind of favoring it, I --
Well, and, yeah, and Carl, I'm sorry, I hate to drag you back up here, but do we know what that cost savings is? I mean, if we're talking $5,000, $10,000, I don't know that it's worth it, but if it's a little more than that, it might be.
Yeah, it's, you know, usually when you have projects, you know, you have general conditions that will cover insurance bonds, you know, as-built, you know, processing shop drawings, and that averages around 15% of the cost roughly. So by doing it together as one project, they don't have to mobilize, demobilize, they're already having those meetings, so you figure 15% is probably a good rule of thumb on this particular project. So it's not, you know, major cost savings, you know, it's just one of those things.
But it's not cabbage.
There's some cost savings, I can't put an exact number on it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, councilmembers, Pontieri and also Mayor Alvin, I appreciate your comments, and I agree with you that we need to give this some more thought and consider, maybe we can use those funds otherwise. And Councilwoman Pontieri mentioned that we were in need of having more facilities on the walking trails for bathroom use, which is very important, I'm sure. So I think that maybe we need to look at it a little bit closer.
So if I could, just so I understand, if we were to, what's the deadline for this?
April 1st.
So there's no time?
Yeah, we don't have another business meeting.
In other words, you don't use it, you lose it next week, or a week and a half.
We use, we lose the $300,000 grant.
The other side of it, right.
But we can apply for it again next year.
And that too, right. Okay. Councilman Clufus?
Sure, I have a couple of different views on this. Number one, Randy has been absolutely incredible throughout my tenure here. I would hate to leave an impression that we didn't want to maximize a partnership with FIND. They've been absolutely incredible. This facility is amazing, and the other problem is that at Holland Park, especially with the splash pad, we're almost reaching capacity at Holland Park. It's wild how packed that park gets. This is one of the opportunities where we have that we can actually add additional parking. And right now, this facility is almost at its bottleneck for parking. Whenever there's been any type of events there, we end up parking along the corridor back there on the actual waterside parkway, and there's just not enough parking on a nice day, on a nice event, it's overloaded. I think this can be an opportunity for us to try to relieve some of the congestion from Holland Park, not so much the other side of town, but Holland Park is a great place for everyone. And if we can make something like that here, with that additional parking, the playground here is awesome. I think that is something that is going to be instrumental to our growth in the future, having multiple options like this is something that I think we should absolutely consider. The concrete pad that we have right now, it's not being fully utilized because we don't have that awning. Without that awning, it is very difficult to have something in the bright sun like that. Any type of event, when you have an uncovered space, it's hard. Yeah, the cornhole boards are there for sure, but you can melt if you go out there during the summer. It's almost unusable.
Park corn.
Yeah, for four or five months out of the year. And then my final, you know, pillar of why I support this is because we are getting a two-to-one multiplier. You know, we're making our money work for us by trying to apply to this grant. We'll fund half, they'll fund the other half, and we continue to have a tremendous relationship. I know that the fishermen and everyone who utilizes the water access there has been tremendously thankful. I'm geographically near this park, so I probably use it more often than other people on the other side of town, but it has been phenomenal. There's so many people using the walking trails there. This is really a highlight of the city, and I think anything that we can do to enhance it, especially when we're asking for grant money in a fun match like this, is something that we should take advantage of now while we still have the ability to access this type of grant. Who knows what next year holds, but I know right now with our past that we're very well positioned to be able to take advantage of this grant, in my opinion.
If I may add to that, just, you know, I was kind of where you are as well. Without having a specific other priority identified where I knew we could use the money, I think I would be in favor of this at this time.
Well, it's helpful that it's impact fees, right? It's not coming from the general fund. You know, I maybe would put this in the back of council's head too, and it doesn't, it's not something that has to be decided today, but I almost want to keep this pavilion public and not allow it to be rented out, because, I mean, you're right, people are looking for reprieve to have a picnic that they don't want to necessarily, you know, have to reserve an entire pavilion for, or play cornhole in the shade. So I think truly making this a shade, and I agree with you, Councilman Clufus, I mean, I walk Waterfront Park all the time, and it's very busy, it's very, it's used a lot. So, and people do art out there. I don't know if you've been there, when people have easels and do art. I'm sure they would rather do that in the shade in the next few months. So just a thought to maybe keep this public and not something that can be rented out. But yeah, the fact that it's coming from impact fees is definitely helpful. So, thank you, and I would urge, the last thing, if we approve this, is let's really try to keep it in budget.
That's always the goal.
Always the goal, I understand that, but I'm just reinforcing that goal based on the fact that this is not, you know, have we identified other priorities? No, but this has also not been identified as a priority, so.
Appreciate that.
Totally understood.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I would open this item up to the public for public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue at this time, Richard?
Richard Hamilton, I live in Island Estates. Actually, I have a property that's right opposite this park, so that doesn't stop me from supporting the use of this park in any way. In fact, it's probably one of the jewels of Palm Coast. Nor do I oppose going for the grant. Just because you get the grant, you still have time to decide if you really want to do that or not. I was hoping in the planning of the parks to have a better idea of what the future overall plan was for Waterfront Park, and I realize this grant's addressing the FIND issues. But I also wanted to just bring to your attention that a year ago, the Office of Greenways and Trails, which is another state bureaucracy, delineated a new sun trail system, which goes from the A1A across the Hamishuns Bridge, somewhere down Old Kings Road, down to Volusia. And that also has some funding available. I'm talking with some other people in the city. I was hoping to talk with Denise, but that's obviously out of the way. But there is an opportunity to create a trail along that corridor that includes Waterfront Park. When I cycle, I come over the bridge, I take a loop, I go down to Waterfront Park, then I go from there west across the north end of Graham Swamp. That, to me, would be a perfect route for it to have as a sun trail, which might give you more opportunity. But this concept of where Waterfront Park fits with that, I believe, needs a little bit more planning. The trail that I cycle on is narrow, it's a lot of pedestrians, it could well do with some widening so that it's safer to use for cycling and pedestrians and things. There are features at Waterfront Park that would be more appropriate to go into a trailhead and system. And so I suggest you apply for the grant, see if you get it. I'm sure Randy Stapelford will make sure you get it. But then, as you get around to planning what you're actually going to do with it, what you see on today could be modified, could be adjusted. I'd like to see some more solar on that pavilion and energy. So there's a lot of things that could be done that you need to consider planning for, okay?
And Richard, I would ask you to, if you would take the time and bring me up to speed on that trail concept so that I can introduce it at TPO.
Okay, I will do.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to address this issue at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment if there's no further discussion. By City Council members, I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri, so I guess I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
And yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We move to Agenda Section I, Number 10. Councillor, if you would be so kind.
The Promenade at Town Center Technical Site Plan Tier 3. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving application number 5565, Hargrove Lane, industrial technical site.
I second.
Plan Tier 3, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. Because this is a quasi-judicial matter, ex parte disclosures would be required at this time, Mayor.
So I'll go down. Councilwoman Pontieri, any ex parte?
No communication.
I've had none. Councilwoman Hyder, any ex parte communication?
No.
And Councilman Clufus? No City Council members have had any ex parte communication. So with that, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and City Council, Fong Wing, Senior Planner with Community Development. This is the first true mixed-use building after 20 years of envisioned by the Town Center DRI. It's located on 17-plus acre at the corner of southwest corner of Bulldog Drive and Central Avenue, as depicted here in red. The applicant has submitted a technical site plan for a mixed-use building approximately about 233,000-plus square feet of building, which includes 204 multifamily units. Since this exceeds the 100,000 square feet and 100 residential units, it's a tier 3, which goes to PLDRB and City Council. The future land use map indicate that Town Center is comprised of DRI mixed-use and conservation color in pink and light green respectively. The site plan is part of the Town Center PUD, there's a high school, is the PSP, and mostly Com-2 along State Road 100. And Town Center DRI and PUD is approximately about 1,600 acres and originally approved in 2003. Site is designated urban core and is located at the most important intersection in Town Center. So the DRI urban core area of the Town Center, which is depicted here as the main street on the previous map, is intended to be developed in an intense manner, and that is very walkable and pedestrian-friendly. So Policy 1.1.1.1 of the comprehensive plan advises that the DRI, the urban core area is intended to have higher densities and intensities associated with a traditional downtown area. The intersection of Central Avenue and Bulldog was anticipated to be the epic center or four corners of the main street, which is now we call it Central Avenue. The promenade with 56,000-plus square feet of commercial on the first floor and 204 residential units on floors 2 through 4 is what is envisioned at this intersection. Here is the -- is what is envisioned at this intersection. Here is the overall site plan. There are six buildings proposed to be constructed and are connected by upper-floor walkways to serve the residents on floors two through four. A total of 65,000-plus of retail residential, including accessory uses, on floor number one. And as you can see, a close-up of the western half, there's the landscape plan. You can see also there's a amenity area, there's a pool, and a pickable court. So here's the unit breakdown of the promenade. You can see that the total of 204 units, and then the requirement in the Town Center is that it has to be a minimum of 400 square feet of living area. So as you can see, the unit breakdown here, the largest in number is Type One with 655 square feet. The second largest in terms of number is the studio with 501 square feet. And here's the site development requirements. As you can see, that the requirement is in the second column. And as you can see, the maximum building height is 80 feet. They are providing 50 feet. Maximum impervious surface ratio is 95 percent. They providing 39 percent. Minimum parking requirements is 514 parking spaces, including 11 ADA spaces and 26 bicycle spaces. They providing exceeding that. And minimum building setbacks is, as depicted here, front to the north and street side to east is 12 feet, and rear and interior is zero, but they are providing exceeding the requirement. And here's the conceptual architectural elevation, 50 feet with four-story building. I borrowed this from the applicant's presentation. So as we review developments like this, we have to go through the review criteria from Section 2.0505 of our Land Development Code. So the first one, requirement, the criterion for the first one is must not be in conflict with public interest. So the finding is that the project is in the public interest, and it is consistent with the Town Center DRI, urban core, and its conservation designation on the flume, and with the Town Center PUD. Must be consistent with LDC and comprehensive plan. The finding is that the project meets seven goals, policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan, as outlined in the staff report, and meets the LDC. It will promote compact and contiguous development and discourage urban sprawl. It will encourage the development of employment centers in close proximity in housing and transportation corridors to be convenient for residents and to improve our economic climate. This is crucial because the vision initially is to have mixed-use buildings surrounding our central park. So this will be the first, and hopefully it will be a catalyst for others to come. Number three, must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the city. It will not have these negative impacts on the city as the project already has public infrastructure in place to support the project and is considered in field development. Number four, must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance. The finding is that the project protects the existing conservation areas and provides intense development at a key location in the Town Center PUD, where this intensity and density was intended to and will be a catalyst for future quality development in nearby areas. And this area is intended to be the main street of Town Center. The applicant did propose to provide trails along the easement of the conservation. However, the district objected to that, but, so they have removed that and provided a different connection within the parking. But they will continue to assist and help the city in order to have that as a separate amenity in the future. And the last criterion is that must comply with all applicable government standards. The project meets all local, state, and federal development requirements. In terms of the environment, the project will not impact any wetlands. In terms of traffic, the traffic study was based on ITE's Trip Generation Manual 11th Edition, and projects that 59, 61 daily trips, 201 AMP pick-out trips, and 242 pick-out trips will be generated from this development. All roadway segments and intersection within the project study area are shown to operate at an acceptable adopted level of service with the projects at traffic included. Based on public participation, this project does not require any neighborhood meeting nor any kind of advertisement. So the next step is that staff review of building permits. They have already submitted that, and it's in the, in process for review. So the recommendation is that the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board unanimously recommends the city council find the project in compliance with the comprehensive plan and approve the promenade at Town Center Technical Site Plan Tier Three, application number 5565. The applicant's team is also here, and they have a PowerPoint presentation to provide you a different perspective on that.
Fong, a quick question, or Mr. DiLorenzo, has this project spurred any interest that you're aware of for either eateries or other destination services to support the multi-use community so far? It's not really relevant to the application, it's just curious.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can you repeat? I didn't, I missed one of your words there.
The question is, has the, has the project garnered any interest amongst restaurant owner, eateries, or any other kind of destination service?
I think the applicant can maybe talk to that a little bit as well, but we've been actively trying to assist with, with some opportunities for filling the building as well. We've provided some contacts of some local restaurateurs that are growing in the community. And, but I think the applicant might also be able to tell you how it has encouraged others to look at the urban core for other projects.
Okay. Questions specific for staff or want to bring the applicant up?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm happy to see that the height of the building is not going to the maximum. I'm happy to see that some of the works, it looks like the applicant is exceeding the minimum requirements, and so I always appreciate that from the standpoint of, I think, what's best for our residents. Just because you can do it doesn't mean you should. So I appreciate that.
Good. So if the applicant would like to kind of, I mean, I'm dying to know what's in there, so, show me.
Thank you.
Hi, Frank Mandola with Persimmon Capital Group, where the guy's developing and the owners of this project. I wanted to show you some of the...
One sec.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, while I'm waiting for Fong, let me show you this very quickly. This is...
You gotta, just because we have people listening, you're gonna have to try to use that mic.
This building is unique in the sense that it is not your typical wood frame structure going up. This is what they call an insulated concrete form. This is what you fill in, the center of this area right here with concrete, and the rebar snaps inside this portion of the form here. The exterior of the building, for example, this can be parched with stucco, okay? And then the interior of the building, where you're gonna screw drywall to these areas, has furring strips inside this form. So this is the actual type of structure. It is a concrete building. It is not a stick-built building.
Right. And Frank, if you can go to the point, what's the additional strength because of that construction?
This, this is twice as strong as concrete block, okay? And this is actually hurricane-resistant, okay? It's waterproof, it's bug-proof, and it's fireproof. Okay, this is a product that's going to be lasting here for, you know, many decades ahead of us, and it's something that insurance companies here in Florida love, okay? So it's easy to get property insurance for this, and the fire insurance is at a good rate. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, sure. Councilwoman Hyder?
Is there a difference in the cost in using this as opposed to the concrete block?
Yeah, this, this is actually, well, it's a concrete block. This is more efficient to build in the sense that it's faster, okay? You don't have all the labor and the sand and everything else that you have with block. But more importantly, you don't have the water intrusion issues that you would have with block with this surface, okay? Nothing can penetrate this surface, yeah.
And what about the cost?
And the cost, it's about
I'm just curious.
Five to eight percent higher, okay? Yeah, that's an average.
Thank you.
But it's, it's an expensive building, but it's here, and this is gonna be a hold, this is a, this is a long-term hold type of development here. It's not something to build and flip or anything like that, you know? So it's all family money. That's right.
Good. Certainly a long time in coming, for sure.
We don't understand why it's not more popular here in Florida. I mean, it's a great system, and they use it in the islands all over the place, you know? We're surprised it's not here. Yeah.
I don't have any questions for you, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Go ahead. Oh, yeah.
I would like to say that I think this adds a tremendous amount of diversity to our housing index, our housing inventory, I'm sorry. This is something that I think is actually going to be useful for the type of housing that we're looking to provide. I know oftentimes we talk about smaller townhouses and things like this, all the way up to 1,800-square-foot, you know, one-bedroom places. This is something that I think a lot of people are looking for, and I'm happy that it's coming to Palm Coast, so thank you.
And just to footnote that, so I went through the training on that building material, and it's usable from literally the smallest concept to, you know, concepts that are many times this size. So there's no, it's not limited in terms of what the size of the project is. So it's a new building construction technique that we're going to employ for the first time here locally, and has great opportunity for the future as well.
Okay. And this is just the site as it exists right now, and that's the proposed project right here. That's looking at the northeast corner of Central and Bulldog, right there. Very good, okay. Another aerial shot, elevation, and that's actually looking from City Hall here, looking towards the building from here. Common areas in the lobby, okay. Okay, and that's, we have a sunrise and a sun lounge, sunset lounge on the, on the fourth level, too. So I just wanted to show you some of the vernaculars here.
I have another question.
Uh, Councilwoman Hyder has one more question, or has another question?
Yeah. With the idea of there being retail shopping centers, stores, and restaurants in there, and also with them having festivals and fairs going on across the street there at Town Center, Central Park, do you think that it would create any conflict of interest between the shops that are going to be at the promenade, and then there being these fairs going on that might also be selling some of the same merchandise that some of your retail shops carry?
I think they'll complement each other. I think the more people we draw to the area, we're going to complement each other. And we also have other people that are interested in the sites now that we're getting this momentum going to develop even across the street on Park and Central. Another project is gonna come forward right there now.
And, and the, you know, Palm Coast is not known for its walkability, at least not now, so this would also complement our walkability scores for the future, which is becoming something that especially the millennials in particular are valuing in terms of their search for dwelling units and things like that, so.
Oh, I love the concept. It's a great idea.
Frank, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other questions from city council? Then I would open the item up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Yes, sir.
Mike Norris, Tunelima Place. I'm glad this is finally happening, because that's where we need to focus, is on the central town district. I would ask, I don't know where they're at in their design, but we all, we always say we want the old Florida feel. So I, I don't, the aesthetics of that building, we should be pushing for that old Florida feel, like down in Delray Beach or the land where you had the awnings over the storefronts. It seems a little bit postmodern, but that's a feel that we should be looking for, because everybody wants us to keep that old-world Florida look. So I would ask that you guys consider that.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Fong, you had a comment?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, the architectural rendering has to go through the Town Center Architectural Review Committee. So it has been approved by the Architectural Review Committee of the Town Center, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Then I would ask city council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So, Councilwoman Pont, Councilwoman Pontieri has made a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Clufus. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, staff, and thank you. Very good. We now move to item, I think it's 11.
Resolution Sawmill Branch at Palm Coast Park Phase 2B. A resolution of City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving application number 5380 for a portion of Section 20, 21, 28, and 29, Township 10, South Range 30 East, Flagler County, Florida, also being a portion of those lands described in the official record book 788, pages 2 through 21, as recorded in the public records of Flagler County, Florida, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing, implementing actions, providing an effective date. This is a final plat approval, and it's quasi-judicial, so ex parte communication.
Councilwoman Pontieri?
No communications.
No ex parte, no ex parte for me, Councilwoman Hyder, and, uh, council, no council members have had any ex parte, and please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Estelle Lance, Planner with the City, and this is the final...
Bring that as close as you can. Thank you.
So this is the final plat for Sawmill Branch at Palm Coast Phase 2B. And this subdivision is a 124.73-acre subdivision located west of US-1 and the Metansus Wood Parkway Roundabout, and north of Sawmill Branch Phase 2A. The zoning map shows the property to be zoned MPD. It is part of the Palm Coast Park Master Plan Development. The future land use map shows the property to be DRI mixed-use with a little bit of conservation in there. The lighter green is the conservation area. The background, this subdivision is part of the Palm Coast Park Master Plan Development. The Master Plan Development Agreement was originally approved in 2011, and the Fifth Amendment to the MPD Agreement was just approved by City Council November 20, 2023. The preliminary plat was approved, and the infrastructure began construction in November of 2021. A few construction photos. On the top left is the entrances, Sawmill Branch phases, the different developments for Sawmill Branch. The bottom left is a road, top right is one of the ponds, and the bottom right is one of the, or the lift station in the site. This, this phase is 252 single-family residential lots, and then both phases 2A and 2B are 493 lots on 17 tracks. A performance bond estimate for the infrastructure is not required since all the infrastructure improvements have already been completed for this phase. And the recommendation is that council adopt Resolution 2024-XX approving the final plat for Sawmill Branch at Palm Coast Park Phase 2B, and authorizing the mayor to execute the plat and staff to issue a final plat development order for application number 5380.
Councilman Clufus, any comment or questions?
None.
No comment.
Just as a reminder to the public, this DRI goes back how long, roughly?
The, the MPD was originally approved in 2011. The MPD was originally approved in 2011, the DRI was slightly before that, I'm not exactly sure, I don't have that date with me today.
Moving towards the end of a, you know, a generation of timeline.
Yes, yes, this has been in the works, the entitlements have been in place for many, many years in the subdivision, the different developments are being built out now and.
Counselwoman Pontieri?
My only question is, and this goes to a broader thing that I'll bring up at the end, but based on the fact that this is on US 1, have we identified the need for any acceleration or deceleration lanes coming in and out of this development?
Dennis Leep, Site Development Manager, this is a DOT road, so all those acceleration, deceleration lanes would have to be approved by DOT and they do traffic studies and, you know, determine if ones are required or not.
So how do we work with them to make sure they've, they're doing or have done the traffic studies? I mean, are they done arbitrarily? What is that process to make sure we're being proactive? Because people speed up and down that road, obviously, I want to make sure that as people are coming in and out of the neighborhood, they don't get plowed into.
Yeah, every project has to submit a traffic study, it's reviewed by our traffic engineer and they also submit to DOT for a site, for a access permit to get on and off of State Road 100. So when they do that, they submit traffic studies and DOT has a traffic operations that reviews the traffic studies and determines what's required on US 1.
Okay, and is that done at this stage? Is that done at a different stage and do we have that if it's been done?
Yeah, it's done actually at the preliminary plat stage, when they start, before they start construction, they submit those studies and it's reviewed by staff and by DOT.
Okay, do we know what the result of that was?
This portion of the road goes out through the Metansus Traffic Circle.
Right, it looks like that, yeah.
Yes, so this traffic goes out there. In future phases, there'll also be a spine road that goes out and connects up toward
Okay, that's what I'm a little more curious about because I can see this one comes off the roundabout, but for future phases, because you mentioned that, you said there's a spine road?
Yeah, there's a spine road that winds through different phases that will tie in approximately south of Old Kings Road.
Got it, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
And to your point, if I'm not mistaken, this public hearing, DOT holds, I don't know hearings, but they have public workshops in advance of their decision-making along with the data that they collect.
Yes.
Any other, okay, then I would open this item up to the public for anyone that would like to comment. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment, come back to the dais, any additional comment or discussion? If not, then I would entertain a motion. Counselman Clufus has made a motion to approve, may I have a second?
A second.
There's a second from Counselwoman Hyder, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you for the
Can I add one comment, Councilmember Pontieri? Just regarding your question, we have actually Phase 3 that's coming to the board, to the Planning Land Development Regulation Board, the subdivision master plan that doesn't come here. So just so that you're aware, that, with that phase, they have to show us the layout and the plans for the spine road that's going to connect over to US 1 further north. And part of that traffic study, even though it's on US 1, it's a DOT road, will include a future signalization there. And that will be funded by DOT when Phases 4 and 5 come in, so those are all coming in now. And that will have a requirement that no COs will be submitted or approved until that connection is completely through and constructed, so.
I appreciate that. If you could shoot me the date of when that's at PLDRB, if you have it, if it's been set, that would be great, just email me and send it my way.
Actually, it's tomorrow.
Oh, is it tomorrow? Okay, because I'll want to just tune in, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, good. Thank you for that very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we now move to I-12, and Counselor, if you would, the Seminole Plats?
Yep, Seminole Palms Phase 1 Final Plat Resolution of City Council, City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving application number 5462 for the final plat of a portion of Section 20 and 21 Township 12, South Range 31 East, City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for execution, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions and providing an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial matter, Mayor, ex parte communication.
No communications.
None for me.
No communication.
City Council has not had any ex parte communication.
Okay, Estelle Lenz-Planner with the city and this is the final plat for Seminole Palms Phase 1. Seminole Palms Phase 1 is a 67.8 acre site, it's located on the west side of Seminole Woods Boulevard, it's approximately 1,600 feet north of Grand Landings Parkway, it's going to be bordered on the south by Citation Boulevard, the Citation Boulevard extension. The zoning map shows the property to be zoned MPD, it's part of the, it is the Seminole Palms Master Plan Development. The future land use map shows the site to be a residential, to have a residential, future land use map designation. The Seminole Palms Master Plan Development Agreement was approved by City Council in 2021. The preliminary plat was approved and the infrastructure construction started in April of 2023. These are some of the construction photos, the top left is the, it will be Citation Boulevard, bottom left is a lift station, the top right shows some staging piping for stormwater and the bottom right shows a pond. And this phase of the development of the subdivision will have 159 single-family residential lots, the entire project will be 451 single-family residential lots. A performance bond estimate for the infrastructure which has not yet been completed in the amount of $4,341.14 has been received and found to be acceptable. And the recommendation is that council adopt Resolution 2024-XX approving final plat, the final plat for Seminole Palms Phase 1 and authorizing the mayor to execute the plat and staff to issue a plat, final plat development order for application number 5462.
Counselman Clufus, comment?
I have none.
No questions or comments?
Nor do I, and I would open up this item to the public, for any member of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment, and I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Motion from Councilman Clufus, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Counselwoman Hyder, all, any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to item J, the Consent Agenda, City Council members, any particular item in the consent agenda, additional discussion?
No.
I have none.
No request of a
Woman Hyder?
No.
No, okay. If there's no other discussion, then I would open up the consent agenda for the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to discuss the consent agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment, come back to the dais. If there's, if there's no further discussion, then I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Counselwoman, thank you, Counselwoman Pontieri has made a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Counselwoman Hyder, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to final public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment on any item that was not previously discussed on the agenda today? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public participation, and I would ask City Council members, are there any final comments for today? Do you want to start?
Sure, so first and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Bevan for her service to the city, very upset to see her go. I do think, though, that as professionals, we need to move on and figure out how to keep the wheels moving. To that end, I think the best person to temporarily take that seat would be our Assistant City Manager, it's why we have an Assistant City Manager to step in when Denise is gone. So I would make a motion to appoint Lauren Johnson as our temporary city manager while we look for a permanent hire.
So I have to call on the motion before we discuss it, I'm not sure we have the authority to do that.
What do you mean by that?
We have the authority to hire a city manager, I'm not sure we have the authority to change the job description, Counselor, I'm going to have to ask you to help me with that.
City Charter authorizes City Council to appoint an acting city manager when there's a vacant
An act, so acting
It would be acting city manager, yes.
Okay, for what period of time?
Well, until we hire somebody. We have to have somebody in that seat to, and the reason, Lauren's fantastic, number one, but number two, she works very, she's worked very closely with Denise, I know that she is up to speed on projects and, I mean, she's just, she's integral to our, to our organization, I think she's the best fit to be acting city manager while we go out to the well.
Okay, the only, and I don't disagree, the only question I have is that the organizational plan includes both Assistant City Manager and a Chief of Staff, and I'm just wondering if together that fills the requirements through the search for an interim and ultimately an RFP for a permanent city manager.
Well, I think
How do y'all feel about it?
Mayor Alfon, respectfully, it would be her job as acting city manager to do, to hire anybody else during this period of time. So it's our job to hire and fire the city attorney and the city manager, everything else rests on the city manager's shoulders. So if she wants to elevate Mr. De Lorenzo to Assistant City Manager temporarily, then that would be her, within her purview. I also, and included in this motion, would want to make sure that Lauren Johnston goes back down to the Assistant City Manager position once we hire a permanent city manager so that that job is securely hers when she's done serving us in the manner in which we need her to.
Regardless of what our interim or our future city manager might think, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to avoid conflict here.
Well, yeah, I mean, the future city manager would obviously, you know, would be up to them ultimately, but I, what I don't want to see is that we terminate her. That's what I'm avoiding.
Yes, no, no, of course, the security
People not be terminated while she's sitting here as acting city manager.
Okay, so you qualify it, good, okay.
Yeah.
Comments from City Council members regarding, actually, you've made a motion.
A motion, yeah, it would be a motion to appoint Acting Assistant City Manager to our Acting City Manager while we look for a permanent hire.
Okay, how long do they think that it would take to find a new interim city manager?
Unanswerable at this time.
Excuse me?
I say unanswerable at this time. We could set a timeline from which we will try to find someone, I'm not sure we could be more specific than that.
I have to say that I think that Lauren Johnston has done an excellent job as Assistant City Manager, and I would like to agree with Counselwoman Pontieri that she be appointed the interim city manager at this time.
So I would second that motion.
You did, okay. So if I may, just let me ask the rest of the questions here. I've not had a chance to speak to Assistant City Manager Johnston about her desire or lack of to take such a position, that's number one. Number two, the, her current responsibilities, how are they affected from a succession standpoint?
Well, Mayor, that's one of the challenges when you fire your city manager on the spot, that they're going to have to figure out.
I get that, too.
Yeah.
And that's the, that is
Or they could roll forward in their current positions.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Or they could roll forward in their current positions with their current responsibilities.
No, I think that we need to go ahead and appoint her and keep the wheels turning, we need a city manager during this time, and I believe fully in her confidence and her ability to step up into this position and she can delegate as her job dictates where other responsibilities rely.
So it's an opinion, okay. How do y'all feel?
I would agree.
I think that true leadership is, you know, really evident when that leader moves on, that they have instilled their individuals beneath them with the level of confidence and skills to be able to complete the tasks that they need to do, and I think that's what Denise did, I think she served the city very well. I'm, you know, a bit shaken on what happened because, you know, I appreciate the great comments about how everyone does a great job, but apparently, you know, that doesn't mean too much. So I take it for what it's worth, but I totally agree, we need a city manager, I don't think we can move forward without a city manager, we can't have everyone move forward in their current positions without having a point of contact, that's not, that's not how our form of government works. So I hope Lauren, I kind of gave a thumbs up before, it seems to be that she would be okay with this appointment and, you know, it's up to us, but I think that's how we move forward and try to get, keep everything moving forward, keep the trains on the track.
Okay, and again, I just, I'm just trying to be as careful as I can here. Ms. Johnston has other, not responsibilities, but other challenges over and above the workload of the city, so I just want to make sure that the fit from her point of view is good. So if I got a thumbs up.
Do you have a, do you have another name in mind that you're thinking of?
No, no, I'm not.
Okay.
In other words, we currently have an Assistant City Manager which is capable of fulfilling all of the things I just heard, so you're elevating, I'm not asking a question, but I know that you're pursuing academic excellence as well, I just want to make sure that we're not negatively changing your career growth, that's really what I'm looking for here.
No, Mayor, I appreciate the sincerity, I have a lot of balls that I juggle, you know, I have two kids, a husband, I am going and pursuing my master's degree at the University of Florida, so I appreciate the sentiment. We've got a strong grasp of operations, I'm happy to continue to steer the ship in absence of Ms. Bevan, so I will help wherever I'm needed.
Okay, that answers my question very well then, so there is a motion, I think it's been seconded. However, I will put this item out to the public if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this motion at this time. Seeing no one come forward, I would go ahead and, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, congratulations. Does that conclude your City Council comments?
No, that was
Councilmember comments?
I think the heaviest one. So a couple things, we have a lot of, I mean, just today we did three final plat approvals, right? So I would like consensus from my colleagues to maybe get a presentation from staff as to what we are looking at construction-wise for road improvements as well as developments over the next 12 months. And the reason I bring this up is I often travel through St. John's County in all areas of the county for work. I was going to Green Cove Springs yesterday and I see the amount of construction that's taking place even on that area, which used to be a very quiet side of St. John's County, and it's, it's running into, road improvement construction is running into development construction, and it is a nightmare. If anybody's gone through St. John's County and there's no respect to our neighbor, disrespect to our neighboring county, but it's a nightmare.
Why?
So, yeah, I want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for that, so if we can get some type of presentation in the next, that covers the next 12 months as to what our road improvement constructions are, because we have a lot of that coming up, and also what our development construction is, just so that we know we're planning the right thing.
So this is over and above the interactive map that we have?
I understand we have an interactive map, yes.
Okay, so you want, you want to enhance that a bit and so we can have a discussion about it, ask questions? I got to ask Ms. Johnston, is that clear enough in terms of a assignment?
Yes, Mayor, we, we do have the 10-year CIP on the schedule for a special budget workshop next Tuesday where you're, where you will get a brief glimpse of that information that you're requesting, Ms. Pontieri, but we can work towards a special presentation on that matter.
That would be great, thank you. If I have consensus, I don't think we got consensus.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think everybody, yes.
Okay.
So does everyone, so that we can get this on an agenda at its, at your earliest opportunity that it would appear for us, okay? Everybody's in agreement with that?
Yes.
So you have a unanimous consensus, thank you, Counselwoman.
Thank you, and the last thing I want to say, and this is going to be controversial, but it is what it is, our assistant, or I guess our vice mayor, decided to show up today to remove our city manager and then get up from the dais. I have it on very good authority that he is campaigning right now at the library and Facebook living while doing it. To me, this this indicates two things. That there was a violation of sunshine that occurred before today's vote, because he showed up to clearly take the gavel, support the motion, and then he left, which if there was something so pressing that he had, why even come to the meeting today? He clearly came to cast his vote for this motion. And now he's campaigning from the library when we have a business meeting that requires voting on serious city matters. This person is running for a county position, and I, I take real issue with this. I know we don't have the ability to censure up here, but this needs to be addressed. This is a problem. So I would be remiss if I didn't bring it up, and I think that there needs to be some light shed on what happened here today. That's my last comment.
Councilwoman Hyder, any final Councilmember comments today?
That's it for the issues that we're at hand. Okay, I just wanted to mention that yesterday I was asked to speak at a meeting for the Deltas, which is a sorority group here in Palm Coast, and they had a group of young African-American ladies that they asked me to speak in front of, being that I have been elected as the first African-American female into city council, and I was honored to do that presentation for them and talk about what it means to be on city council and other issues and the fact of things that I enjoy, things that I may not enjoy. But I really appreciated them inviting me to come there, and I would like to at some point invite these young ladies to come to see one of our city council meetings and how it's conducted. So I hope that it's okay that I speak with the Deltas about bringing in these young people and letting them see how their city government works.
So we're a public meeting, and we would welcome them? Absolutely, that would be delightful.
Thank you. I think they would enjoy it.
Okay. Councilman Clufus?
Sure. I don't think Councilwoman Pontieri would be surprised to hear that this isn't the first time Vice Mayor Danko has skipped council to be campaigning. Last year, or two years ago, the same thing happened as well. So this is a repetitive behavior, and I think it absolutely needs to be addressed. And I also think that it was not coincidental that he had people with him in the audience that had prepared statements for this type of thing. I think firing someone without cause isn't the way to do it. There's no way that we can say this is a good precedent to set. If we sit up here and we say without cause, that means that we haven't even tried to improve the performance of one of our leaders so that we can work from a top-down approach to ensure that everyone feels adequate safety and the ability to, you know, move up in this workforce. I'm very, very thankful for every one of our directors in the back of this room that are going to go back and try to lead their teams and create a sense of unity, and that we're going to get through this together. But I can't say that without definitive, with definitive confidence because of the elected officials that we have and who's going to be sitting up here moving forward, and that's a scary thing. And I hope that this is covered in regards to our public knowing what goes on in this council meeting. It's very sad to me that we only have four people in our audience right here to see what happened today, because this is something that starts and stops with us up here. And that's the bottom line, is that it is up to us to set the precedence for our future going forward. This should have been something that we discussed amongst the team. This is also a problem for trying to acquire our next city manager.
That's a problem. You're absolutely right.
Huge problem, thousand percent. If we want to have someone who is going to, you know, have confidence and trust in our system, then we have to be the ones instilling that confidence and trust. And I agree with Councilwoman Pontieri's positions, and I, you know, wish Denise the best, and I will reach out and let her know my feelings. But yeah, it's a sad day to be up here, and it's also very troubling, and I understand how everyone in the back of the room can feel troubled right now, and that's an okay emotion to feel. Thank you.
And, Councilor, any final comments for today? Okay, then I would ask for-
Mayor, can I just highlight the reporting of emergency and sole source purchases for February 2024? I just, normally, the city manager would address that, and I just want to make sure that we touch on that.
I have no questions.
All right, with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn? Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you.